... I'll do this to adjourn on Monday evening to Tuesday, June 17, when I'll be back and we'll hold our fourth session at that time. Now, I recognize that if it's necessary to go overtime in order to complete our business in three nights, that's going to inconvenience many people, particularly those who have the 11 o'clock shift and those who have to get up very early the next morning. Ms. Brickman, I realize that. And whatever you do about this, it's going to inconvenience somebody, but there is going to be no inconvenience to a religious group on my watch. Just do it.
I don't think I have a microphone.
Can we have the mics, please?
Ah, Mr. Moderator, could we consider an earlier start on Monday as another way of expanding the available time for debate?
Well, I understand that on Monday evening, which is prom night, the buses will be loading at 6:30.
Ow!
And it would be a mess if we tried to start any earlier than 7:00.
I see.
So I think a 7:00 starting time on Monday, we're locked into that. Yeah, we sure can. Article 10. The motion before you in Article 10 is on page 3 of the pink supplement, runs over to page 11 of the pink supplement. It's moved by Ms. Daley and seconded by Mr. Boers. Voted that the town revoke Article 3.14 and substitute a new Article 3.14 Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Commission, et cetera, in the words of this very long motion. We have a total of five amendments, and bear with me, and I will track you through each one. The first amendment is offered by Mr. Spiegel, seconded by Mr. Rosenthal, is included, is set forth on the lavender supplement, and it would very simply insert in the third paragraph of Section 3.14.2 on page 5 of the pink supplement, insert after the Director/CDO shall the words "be a department head/senior administrator" and shall then on with the rest of the sentence as is, "report to the town administrator." That is the first amendment that we'll consider. There are two amendments offered by CTOS. They're found on page 13 of the pink sheet supplement. And if you look at on page 4 of the pink supplement, in the next-to-the-last paragraph, the last sentence, the CTOS moves, would have us move, and I'll take that motion in a moment, to delete the next-to-the-last sentence of that paragraph. So they would delete, "The BOS shall select one of its members to serve ex officio as a non-voting member of the commission." And the rationale of the CTOS is set forth on page 13, as I said. Second CTOS-sponsored amendment is to, in the third paragraph of Section 3.14.2 on page 5 of the pink supplement, second line, it would substitute the word "commission" for the word "BOS" in the middle of that line. And Mr. Leary of CTOS will speak to those proposed amendments. Do we have, would a town meeting member like to move those two amendments? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And finally, we have the two amendments offered by the Human Resources Board, and those amendments are found on page 15 of the pink supplement. The first of which is to... Okay, I'm told that the Human Resources Board is not going to pursue those two amendments, unless there's somebody who wishes to move them, we will strike those. Now, I have to make one more change. I'm sorry to complicate your lives, but this is a complicated article. That is that paragraph Roman 7 at the bottom of page 7 of the pink supplement, that paragraph running over to the middle of page 8 is being substituted in the main motion by the paragraph 7 on the yellow supplement. So that has become, by virtue of votes of the Selectmen and Advisory Committee, part of the main motion that begins on page 3. Against that background, I call on Ms. Daley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nancy Daley for the Board of Selectmen. First, I want to thank the other eight members of the Selectmen's Diversity, Inclusion, and Affirmative Action Committee, who worked very diligently over the past year to bring this bylaw to you. It was a hard-working and knowledgeable committee, and in particular, I have to mention Town Meeting Member Bernard Green, who stepped up and did a significant amount of language drafting and later revising to take into account the many comments we heard during our meetings, our public hearing, and by email. Also want to thank Associate Town Counsel Patty Correa and Sandra DeBeau, who helped out a great deal. And I want to note that we had substantial and thoughtful input from the public during this process. The old bylaw was very confusing. It gave the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission a wide variety of responsibilities, including many youth services responsibilities, which were added to the commission's docket after a 1974 reorganization, combining two separate departments into one. Many of the responsibilities, the commission was not able to address in recent years. With this new bylaw, the committee tried to make the commission more relevant and to bring the bylaw current with the changing landscape in the diversity area. We enlarged the category of protected persons. We have refocused the commission, first by having a mission statement which shows the town's commitment to diversity and inclusion, then by streamlining the responsibilities to take out some of the items that the commission has not been doing for many years. For instance, responsibility for anti-discrimination in town contracts is governed by state law and administered by the town's chief procurement officer. Secondly, after youth services was added to the bylaw, the commission actually ran a large summer jobs program for disadvantaged youth. Similar programs are now run by Steps to Success and the town's Recreation Department, so we removed some of the youth language from the bylaw. After much discussion, we did agree to maintain the current 15-person membership, but we redefined the quorum, so they will still be able to operate with a quorum even if they drop down below that a little bit to 11 members. We changed the affirmative action officer to the chief diversity officer, the term that is currently in use by many institutions. We've given that person a direct line of report to the town administrator and, if necessary, to the Board of Selectmen. That person would essentially wear two hats. First, as the staff person working with the diversity commission, and second, as an ombuds person to town and school employees or others who feel that they've been discriminated against. After a great deal of discussion, we did not give the commission the quasi-judicial authority to hear and act on specific complaints from town or school employees against the town or the school department for two reasons, I'm sorry, for several reasons. First, while employees might want to air their grievances in public, past cases have shown that those employees were not willing to release the town or school department, which are constrained by privacy laws, to reveal the facts from the other perspective. Second, almost all town and school employees are unionized, and we must be careful not to violate clauses in the contract which prohibited direct dealing with such employees, not through their union representatives. Finally, the committee was concerned that unless employees were encouraged to hire legal counsel for such appearances before the commission, and the commission developed and operated under a set of comprehensive legal procedures to ensure fairness, that person might find that they had made statements before a public body which could later be used to their detriment because decisions of the commission would not be legally binding. Instead, the CDO can either work as an ombuds person with such employees or can give them advice as to what other legal avenues they might pursue. The chief diversity officer would report back to the commission, though, in terms of general problems or issues or trends that seem to be troubling and require action. Currently, in this proposed bylaw, the commission does have a strong educational role. It's given the job of trying to eliminate discriminatory barriers in employment, housing, and education. It will work with the CDO to develop a diversity and inclusion policy for a vote of the Board of Selectmen, and work with the Board of Selectmen, the HR Board, and others to increase diversity in town employment and on our many boards and commissions. Finally, it's able to hear complaints from any member of the Brookline Protected Classes about discrimination in town by entities other than the town and school department. A late language change would have precluded town employees from going before them if they felt they were discriminated by, for instance, a restaurant in town. Mariela Ames pointed that problem out to us. It was not our intention to do that, so that's why we went back to the earlier language. Finally, by ensuring that the commission will receive reports on both the town and school hiring and statistics, it will have the cooperation of other departments, and by providing that the commission will send out a report on its activities and concerns, we've tried to prop the door open between the town and the commission so that it will be more effective within the town's structure. As to the other proposed amendments to this warrant article, the Committee on Town Organization and Structure does not like the provisions for a selectman to be an ex officio member of this commission, feeling that it's in conflict with the selectmen's appointing authority, and they do not want the CDO to be able to report directly to the BOS when necessary. We incorporated a number of their suggestions, but we rejected these. The selectmen do serve on several boards and commissions. For instance, I'm on the Council on Aging. We also felt that the CDO must, when necessary, be able to go directly to the Board of Selectmen, for instance, if a problem lies within the town administrator's office. The Human Resources, not that I think it would, no, but just in case. The Human Resources Board amendment, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not going to address that since they're not being moved. Finally, Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. Spiegel have a proposed amendment that would give the CDO the title "department head," in addition to "director." The committee was split on this issue and voted very narrowly for "director." CTOS recommended "director," and the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously for "director" for the following reasons. First, the town administrator requested the last change to this bylaw, which took the position from "director," who's also a department head, to simply "director." He feels strongly that the old model of having a single-person department did not work. And while nobody would be happier with the repeal of Proposition 2.5 more than the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen, the fact is that we have a limited ability to raise taxes. Not only was this a single-person department, but the previous incumbent had been asked to take on monitoring complaints and negotiations with our cable companies, among other things, as we sought to control personnel costs over the years. It is simply unrealistic to assume that this could become a larger department when we are facing tremendous pressure on the budget due to schools' issues, our OPEB liability, and collective bargaining agreements. Secondly, I believe this function is working much better than it used to as part of the Health and Human Services Department, where Dr. Lloyd Gellino, who currently holds the staff position that would become the CDO, is able to call upon the team's resources to help out with human relations issues. I've spoken with Dr. Gellino, and he would very much like to stay in the Health and Human Services Department, delivering services rather than dealing with a separate budget and few resources. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen unanimously urges you to support our vote and to reject the amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Ames. You have up to seven and a half minutes.
Please don't start the clock yet. Thank you. Mariela Ames, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 15, and Chair of the Human Relations Commission. After a long struggle, the Human Relations Commission has acquired a moderately diverse membership of our 15 members. Six are persons of color. I have stated repeatedly that the two most important goals for the commission from the perspective of people for whom the commission was established, people of color and other protected classes, were and are to address effectively discriminatory experiences of all people, in schools, in the community, in the workforce, and workforce diversity. The upcoming resolution of Article 31 is a reflection of such experiences, which, by the way, the commission fully supports. In 2013, workforce diversity, equal opportunity, and access discrimination, and related civil rights were brought forth via two articles for Town Meeting, Articles 10, which sought to reaffirm the role of the commission as the body to develop affirmative action policy, and Article 16, which sought the appointment of candidates of color to the commission. After much resistance and after Town Meeting passed Article 16, which sought the appointment of candidates of color, appointments were made. The Selectmen, though, excluded one of the most qualified, persevering, and experienced citizens in Brookline on issues of equality, a fellow Town Meeting member, and a candidate for Selectmen later, Mr. Arthur Conquest. Our lack of diversity in the top positions in the town's workforce, still zero of the 25 department heads are people of color. In the school department, where the faculty is 89% white, while the student population is 40% not white. The same goes with different town boards and commissions. It is a grave concern. If you look around right now, Town Meeting is over 95% white, while the community is over 25% non-white. Let me share. The reason the commission has been irrelevant is that the director and commission were not responsive to the issues they were set up to address, namely workforce diversity via affirmative action and others, and complaints of discrimination. The commission did not exercise the oversight over the director's work. Complaints went unheard with no accountability. The commission was not involved. The problem was not the language of the existing bylaws, and it is still not the problem. They became a problem when the commission tried to act on them. As I have said to the Selectmen, and now to you, the point is to improve what was not working. Article 10, including all the amendments up to tonight, does not improve what was not working. Instead, it puts in writing those flawed practices in the name of striving for inclusion. The issue is how anyone on the role of the director or CDO, Chief Diversity Officer, and commission are going to be responsive, accountable, and supported in addressing workforce diversity and discriminatory practices beyond inspirational words on paper. The focus on the title, whether a director, an officer, number of members, 11 or 15, quorum, eight or six, seats or serving members, potential conflicts of interest, of collective bargaining agreements, potential or threatened litigation, all those lose sight of the goal and do not address the substance. Demand or support actions that reject and stop discriminatory practices that ultimately lead to our lack of diversity in the workforce and validate a reputation that Brookline is a difficult community for people of color. As amended, Article 10 is not an improvement. Instead, it will specifically take away the commission's most relevant function, the current powers of investigation and recommendation on all complaints charging discrimination. We are to take notes of the complaint without investigating or drawing conclusions, decide whether it makes sense to present a summary to the town administrator, or in some instances to the Selectmen, in some instances to the school department, for further action. When I ask what would those further actions entail, I did not receive a clear answer. I would love for you to hear what the answer is. Something else that will happen with Article 10 if it passes, it will take away any direct role or oversight on complaints brought to the CDO by employees. The CDO, again, at his discretion, may share in general terms trends or problems, and this is provided there's no threatened litigation. It will take away the commission's authority for developing equal opportunity and affirmative action. Instead, it will give the role to draft a now so-called diversity and inclusion policy. It will exclude employees from ever having the option to seek relief or help from the commission. It will give the commission about 18 tasks, among those, a number of roles in educational programs, research, campaigns of awareness, goal-setting, reports, but appropriate no money for them. Members of the commission relayed concerns to the drafters of Article 10 months prior to being filed. Once it was filed, as the commission, we tried to address issues of substance which were deemed beyond the scope by the moderator after having been first deemed allowable. They are listed in the combined reports. With respect to the amendment offered by Mr. Rosenthal and Stanley Spiegel, Marty Rosenthal and Stanley Spiegel, as I have said to them, I understand in principle that it is better to have a department head rather than being placed in a division. But what good does that do if we are going to ask this person to do precisely what was wrong by his predecessor? Only this time, we put it in writing. That is, handle complaints privately, have sole discretion on whether to share information with the commission, have no oversight and no accountability, in essence, get paid hundreds of thousands to do what exactly? Keep the lid on? We keep hearing it is a complex issue with complex procedures and amateur commission, which would require training and expertise. The bottom line is that if the Selectmen wanted to address the issue, they would do it. And if they meant it, they would not even have a need for a director or department, perhaps not even a commission. The Selectmen appoint all department heads. The Selectmen appoint all town members of boards and commissions, including, of course, members of the Human Relations Commission. The current new commission has offered to help and is eager to work. As you recall, its diversity committee had gotten free technical advice from the governor's office, and training could be provided if the Selectmen meant it.
Your point minute.
Let me end with highlighting that all commissioners of color, who indirectly represent those the commission was set up to protect, do not deem Article 10 as an improvement. That is because Article 10 does not effectively address the much-needed support of the Selectmen. It does not address oversight and accountability. It takes away the much-needed responsiveness to complaints of discrimination, and it takes away responsibilities for workforce diversity policy. As such, the commission continues to be irrelevant, becomes a referral center no more than window dressing. By a majority vote, the commission recommends no action on Article 10. I ask that you support that recommendation.
Mr. Sandman and Mira Lys, would you come forward to the front row, please?
Good evening. I'm Mike Sandman, speaking for the Advisory Committee. We have this article in front of us because in May last year, Town Meeting voted to change bylaw 3.14 to eliminate the one-person Human Relations Youth Resources Department and create a new position of division head to support the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. It was concerned that the department had not done enough to make the town's workforce more diverse, and concerned that there were no minority department heads. Town Meeting asked the Selectmen to review Article 3.14, which had been written in 1970. Selectman Daley headed a committee that completely rewrote the article, and that's what you have. And after review by the Advisory Committee and CTOS, Article 10 emerged, as you have it before you, with that subsequent correction of language that would allow town employees to bring complaints to the commission for discriminatory treatment in the town outside of the workplace. Dealing with diversity and discrimination is a complex problem. It is a complex problem, as we have heard. There's work to be done in Brookline on this issue, and I don't think that anybody questions that, and thus, the proposed bylaw is moderately complex. A cynic might say that this complexity proves the adage that a horse is a camel designed by committee. And in this case, three committees had a hand in this article. But Selectman Daley and her committee provided a very sleek camel. They stepped up to the plate and produced a strong framework, a new Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, and to accompany a revitalized commission. The slide that you have in front of you shows the current version and the proposed version that is in the article. Just make a few comments with regard to the structure. The Office of Diversity and the Chief Diversity Officer have responsibilities that cut across all departments. The office can be located within whatever department the town administrator believes will provide the best support, and that is different than a department, different than a department with its own budget line, and that is deliberate choice of the Advisory Committee and supported by CTOS. The proposed article reflects the broader understanding of diversity and inclusion that has emerged in the 40 or more years since the original article was written. The original article was focused largely on race. It came as the aftermath of the Civil Rights Movement of the 1960s, and it has the statement that the commission and the department should focus on increasing communication across racial lines. That's certainly a very important objective, and yet, there are other protected classes, other classes of people who are discriminated against, and it's important to broaden the focus of the commission, and indeed, the article does that. Selectman Daley has already described why youth resources has been de-emphasized significantly. Schools and the Recreation Department both have considerable resources for youth programming and recreation in particular, as Selectman Daley's committee heard, has really done an outstanding job, and we did not feel, the Advisory Committee did not feel, that the commission needed to cover youth programming. The bylaw avoids usurping the school department's processes for dealing with complaints from employees about discrimination, and it provides a similar resource for town employees, that is, it provides a resource for people to come with concerns, with complaints, with issues, without undermining the processes that are built into collective bargaining agreements. There's no reason why the commission and the CDO could not hear or receive a complaint from an employee. The question is, then, what do they do with it? And it's very important not to interfere with collective bargaining agreements. So there are no adjudicatory powers, that is, the power to issue a finding of facts. Article 3.14 in its original form was silent on fair housing. Article 5.5 added adjudicatory powers, including powers of subpoena, that regrettably turned out to be not legal under state law. And so therefore, Article 3.14 says that the commission and CDO have oversight over fair housing, minus any power in bylaw 5.5 that may not be legal. And certainly, that begs the question, isn't it time to fix 5.5? And I believe that Selectman Daley's committee is going to tackle that next. And like most bylaws, in the original bylaw, there was no specific provision for reviewing Section 3.14 of the bylaws. The new bylaw provides for review after five years. The only contentious matter in the Advisory Committee's review was whether the CDO should be a department head, which implies a separate budget line and creates complications when it comes to providing staff support for what would be a very small department. The Advisory Committee suggested the creation of an Office of Diversity, and the article gives the town administrator responsibility for placing the office into, not under, into, not under, a department that can provide appropriate support. The Advisory Committee voted twice, by a margin of two to one, not to make the office a separate department, and CTOS made the same recommendation. The Advisory Committee unanimously recommends adoption of Article 10, as you have it before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mira Lys. And Mr. Hochleitner, would you come forward and sit in the front row, please?
Good evening. I'm Mira Lys. I represent Precinct 6. It's taken a lot of effort to get to this point, and so I wish the bylaw didn't fall short of the very legitimate need that the town faces. As probably most of you know, the Human Relations and Youth Resources Commission became dysfunctional last year because the Select Board decided to put a moratorium on appointments. last year because the Select Board decided to put a moratorium on appointments, pending a review that now brings us to this warrant article. A resolution at the last town meeting encouraged the Board to lift the moratorium. New appointments have since been made, and the Commission has barely had enough time to function again. Indeed, the indefinite terms of new appointees sent a very clear message: don't initiate anything. As I predicted last fall, they automatically became lame ducks. If this vote passes, their terms end, though they can be considered for reappointment. The proposed new Commission offers some excellent opportunities to bring Brookline into the real world. And I applaud the amendment to make the Director a department head, which, by the way, I believe amends the third paragraph and not the second paragraph that is in our books. I'm grateful that the Commission didn't just become an arm of the Human Resources Department, which was briefly being explored. But I'm disappointed that it doesn't refer to human rights rather than human relations. When I attended an early meeting of the Diversity, Inclusion, and Affirmative Action Committee, which is bringing this warrant article to us, I heard discussion about human rights, and I left with the clear impression that that was the direction the committee was going in and would recommend. Yes, the town can improve its human relations, especially with outspoken people of color who tell us the unpleasant truth and are then chastised for doing so. But the heart of the matter is human rights. Guarantee those, and human relations may well take care of themselves. My biggest concern is that the town employees do not have access to the Commission if they feel their concerns are dismissed and their voices are not heard. While the Human Resources Department certainly has ultimate responsibility for employees, the fact remains that historically, this has led to legal action rather than resolution. Now that the Commission is able to function, there is no need to rush this through at this town meeting. I've heard concerns that delay would postpone efforts to carry out the badly needed affirmative action provisions. But there is nothing in the long-time mission of the Commission as it stands now to prevent that from moving forward. It simply takes the commitment to do so. Instead of being able to make the bylaw better now, it is being described as a "living" bylaw, quote unquote, to enable needed revisions. So what's the rush? The town's needs are urgent, but they can be addressed immediately without passing an inadequate bylaw. In fact, the work of the rejuvenation, rejuvenated Commission could well inform what a good bylaw and a new Commission should look like. Please vote no action.
Mr. Hochleitner and Mr. Green.
Brian Hochleitner, Precinct 6. Apologize, I've got a cold, so.
It would help if you spoke into the microphone.
Okay. So I'm a member of the Human Relations Commission. I've been on the Commission for about a year and a half. And I, I came to the Commission, I was told that there'd been a number of resignations from people, that there'd been sort of a split, a divided vote over an effort to adopt an affirmative action policy for the town. A majority of the Commission voted for it, and some other people resigned effectively because they felt that there wasn't a consensus and that wasn't kind of how they wanted to move forward. I won't speak for them, but I came onto the Commission on the theory that I'm someone who, I've worked in town government or in city governments, I thought I could try to help bring people together. So one of the first things I did was I tried to work with the Human Resources Board, which had their own affirmative action policy, and tried to see if we could work to bring the two together. We sort of started down that path, and then the discussions over this committee and the bylaw and everything else kind of took over, I guess. So I think in some ways that process is sort of indicative of what I think is one of the two real problems that the Commission has, has suffered from. I don't think it's, that there isn't enough power given to the Commission. I think it's, it's two things. It's a lack of focus, and it's a lack of resources. And I think that the, the bylaw makes improvements on both of those. Just to sort of step back for a second and talk about process, our Commission, the Human Relations Commission, had five separate meetings where we talked with Selectmen Daly. She came and presented a couple of times, presented different drafts to us. And it seems like there was a consensus among the Commissioners that this wasn't perfect, but it was a step in the right direction. I think we went around the room at one meeting and, and everyone, or almost everyone said, you know, I have some comments on this, but I can work with it, and this is, this is going in the right direction. It was only later, when we really started trying to look at the bylaw and see if there were specific amendments to propose, that it was determined that some of the amendments that were favored by certain Commissioners were out of scope. And so we couldn't kind of really bring those to the floor of town meeting at the same time as, as this vote. And so we had two different sort of divided votes, in which there was a narrow majority that said we should recommend no action. I was not someone who voted in favor of recommending no action. I think that this bylaw is not perfect, it's an improvement. I think that, just to go back to the two areas that I think, you know, have been sort of the problems with the Commission, the lack of focus, I think that it is great that it's, it's focusing the Commission on the areas of diversity and inclusion and discrimination. I think, you know, the youth stuff was really a distraction, it was something we never talked about at any of our meetings. And then in terms of resources, I think it's, it's great that we are creating an office, that there'll be a Chief Diversity Officer. I think those things are all sort of speak to a commitment to, you know, providing resources to the Commission. I think there's been some improvements over the last few months, having staff from the Health Department working with us, and I hope that can continue. But I do think that, I'm a big fan of Lloyd Gellino, I think he's been doing a great job. I would like to think that if we set up this Commission and we create a new position, Director of the Office of Diversity and Inclusion and Chief Diversity Officer for the town of Brookline, that we would not automatically assume that Lloyd would be given the position and that we would, we would open it up to outside candidates. And I think it actually could present an opportunity for the town to finally hire a diverse department head.
You have one minute.
Brings me to my last point, which is that I support the amendment proposed by Marty Rosenthal and Stanley Spiegel to raise the stature of the Director and the Chief Diversity Officer. I think it's, it's not perfect. I understand the concerns that Mel Klechner has raised, that we don't want to have one person departments. I guess it's not a problem to have a one-person office, but it's, one-person department is deemed different. Personally, I think it's more important to just raise the stature of the position, and hopefully, it'll allow us to attract great candidates. And if it's, and if Lloyd ends up being the person, I will happily work with him, but if, at some point, you know, he, he won't be around and there'll be a chance to hire somebody else at that point then. But in any case, it just, I just feel like it's important to raise the stature of that office and, and really try to attract a great candidate, and maybe we'll get a diverse department head finally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bernard Green, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7, Member of the Advisory Committee, and I was also a member of the Selectmen's Diversity Committee. But tonight, I'm seeking for myself, not for any of those organizations. It's kind of hard to make my presentation, the presentation I prepared, because I think Nancy and David summarized the, the article fairly well, and other people have indicated the differences they have with it. I'd like to sort of at a high level, sort of point out a couple of things that are important to me, hopefully they're important to you. First of all, I'm urging you to vote, of course, in favor of the amendment, and urging you to support the Stanley Spiegel amendment. And my reason for that is as follows. I think that in deciding whether to support the issue of department versus division, you should consider the following. Under the old structure, Mr. Bressler was a department head for many, many years. And I guess the question is, what is a symbolism of now, under a new structure, reducing the perceived importance of the position and the importance of the task that that position has as its responsibility to less than it was in the previous years? I don't think there are any structural or organizational problems with the language that Mr. Spiegel, or Stanley Spiegel has proposed. Doesn't mean that there'll be a department building or any, you know, anything like that. It just means that, you know, the Chief Diversity Officer would have a status in the community as well as within the town that would make him a little more effective than otherwise. The other thing I'd like to mention in response to some of the complaints or some of the criticisms of the warrant article is that, you know, this Commission that is, is set up has some significant powers. It can't go out and subpoena people, can't prosecute them as the bylaw currently, bylaw 10.2, I think it is, provides. It can't do a lot of macho powerful things, but does have some really significant powers. And those powers have to do with what it can say to the community in its annual report and in the goals that it sets on a biannual basis, and its responsibility to, in its annual report, to review those goals and specifically identify the impediments to implementing those goals that it may find. Now that's a pretty powerful power, in that, to the extent that there are impediments, whether it's from whoever, to actually carry out diversity policies in hiring and other areas, by making that public and making it very concrete as to what the impediments are, the power of, of the community to force change can be mobilized. And I think that that's not perfect, but it's a very significant power that the Commission has. And I suggest you read through Articles 3.14, 6, in terms of what the substance of the annual report is, in order to see what I'm talking about. The other thing I'd like to mention is that, I won't mention that because I don't have time. You know, warrant Article 10 is an attempt to reestablish on a firm and coherent footing the Office and the Citizens Commission that handles complaints and concerns related to civil rights and human rights issues in the town. And if you read 3.14.1, I think the fourth paragraph, we do talk about human rights. But it attempts to do so in more than a formalistic manner. It attempts to give real substance to this effort.
You have one minute.
Okay? I think I have, alright. The difficulty of making diversity and inclusion more than a formal structure and making it into an internalized commitment is illustrated by the following. If we polled town committee meeting member, or town meeting members, most people would say that they agree with diversity and inclusion, and agree that it's important, and that they agree that, that we should strive for that goal. But that support may quickly erode when it becomes clear that diversity and inclusion requires work, and it may require giving up some long-held privileges and expectations, and also giving up some of the comforting notions people may have about what it takes to keep Brookline the appealing community it is. For that reason, our commitment to diversity and inclusion has to be deeper than the banal expressions of ethics and morality. We have to have an understanding of the concrete ways in which including all the labor power of our community and the functioning of the community is good and beneficial. That's why warrant Article 10, or the proposed bylaw, starts with a discussion of purpose in Section 3.14.1. Please read that carefully while you're sitting around listening to us.
Please conclude, sir.
I will. That section states that the Diversity Committee hopes Brookline believes with respect to diversity and inclusion, that everyone has a stake in diversity and inclusion, including people who, because of their economic ratio or other status, are not victims of discrimination or exclusion, because there are very concrete ways in which diversity provides or helps groups as well as entities become more smarter. And because I don't have time, I won't go into the details of that.
Thank you. It really needs to be.
But that is the, the key thing that I want to get across, and please read Section 3.4.1. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. When I ask the speakers to conclude, I don't mean sooner or later, I mean sort of now. Mr. Rosenthal.
This is a tough time to get up to the podium, I think, after that. Marty Rosenthal, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, could I get a, a two-minute acknowledgement when I'm done with two minutes? I promised Mr. Spiegel I'd spend no more than forty percent on the overall bylaw.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I was on the Diversity Committee, I'm on CTOs, I'm the second youngest member on CTOs. I don't support the amendment by CTOs, but I have great regard for my colleagues on that committee. I'm supporting the article and obviously the amendment that Stanley and I proposed. I'm going to go quickly because I, as usual, have too much to say and too much more than you're interested, probably. We worked very hard on this article. I didn't think we'd get it done. It was the last night before the warrant, that we had a lengthy meeting, it went till at least eleven. They adopted a lot of things that night, including a lot of my proposals, including the, I think it's towards the end, at a minimum every five years, the Commission will come back with change proposals. So I, I got on board that night, and I do believe this is a giant step forward. I'm sorry that five, by five-four majority, the Commission doesn't feel that way, but I do believe it's a giant step forward. I've worked on civil rights issues now for forty years. I'm not going to brag about my credentials, but you can look at my office website if you want to read about them. This is a blueprint for the future. The main complaints don't impress me by Ms. Ames. I don't think, I've twice for police rejected civilian review boards. I think that's essentially what they're trying to be here. I don't think we can do it in Brookline. I have a good friend who's the leading person suing police in the state. He agrees with me, Brookline doesn't need it. He happens to live in Brookline. Brookline doesn't need civilian review. These Commissioners could not do civilian review, it's just not possible. I think we put in here as much as a Citizen Commission can do relative to complaints. We put in some good stuff about schools, which was a very difficult balance, as Town Council knows. We looked at those issues very carefully. How far can you go in treading on the so-called independence of schools? And they do have some independence, especially for educational policy under state law.
You've used forty percent of your time.
Thank you very much. Let me switch to the amendment, then. We believe that this officer, office should be on a par with the Human Resources Office. And that's where this language came from, department head, senior administrator. We believe it's a matter of stature. The question I pose is why not? What, what are the reasons against this? I really am not, I've been hearing them for weeks, I'm not convinced by any of them. Last year was worked better. So what? We can do better than last year. It was bad in the past. So what? We can do better than in the past. We've got a new Commission. This blueprint will, will do better than the past, it will do better than the past year. A department of one, we had a department of one. That was not the problem with the Human Relations Office, that it was a department of one. We do have a department, and I've cited this, the Veteran Services Department, a one-person and a, I assume it's a secretary. It's a director, it's a separate department. I've been saying that for a few weeks, and, well, Senator DeBois has told me it's a division of Health and Human Services. I, that's what she told me two weeks ago. I looked and looked and looked for that. In the financial plan, it's listed separately. In the annual reports, it's listed separately. If you look at your budget that you passed, the departmental budgets in Article 8, it's listed separately. Now maybe on some piece of paper somewhere, it's called a division. But the point is, these are not magical terms. There's nothing magical about division, there's nothing magical about office, there's nothing magical- There's nothing magical about department. Nothing magical about director. But the point of our amendment is, we think that this amendment could give this office more stature. We think it could give the commission more stature. Can I get the first PDF, please? I've got one PDF and one, I think it's a forty-second video.
Well, you have forty-five seconds to present it.
All right, thank you. This is the annual report from 2012, and you'll see all the department heads, police chiefs and so forth. Could I go to the video, please?
My name is Frank Farlow. To what extent have you found that it's important that an organization's diversity officer have a hierarchical rank that's close to that as the chief executive? For example, in our town, a department head in relation to the, what I would call the chief executive, the Board of Selectmen.
I think it's very important.
Thank you. That's enough. Did we see Sandra Borders? I don't know if we even saw her. I turned around, but that's Sandra Borders, who was one of the two panelists for the Diversity Forum last year from the governor's office. relations commission by giving them more stature, and it gives, it's an opportunity for town meeting to express its opinion that this office and this commission deserves the same stature as the Human Resources Director. Thank you.
Mr. Spiegel and Mr. Leary, would you come forward and sit in the front row, please?
Stanley Spiegel from Precinct 2, speaking for myself, not the advisory committee. Well, clearly, I agree with what Marty said, with what Bernard Green just said, in that the importance of a department head is the stature, the authority. I'm not a big believer in messages, but this does send an important message, not only to people in town government, but to the citizens of the town, that we believe the function is as important now as town meeting believed it to have been forty years ago when we established a department. A lot of folks were unhappy a year ago when we retreated, that it was understood to be a bridge, sort of a Warren article, bylaw, that would be amended as we have before us now. And it's important, I think, now to restore that sense of commitment, not only symbolically, although that's very important, I think, the way people interact with each other. Titles matter, subliminally or otherwise, titles matter, but also the importance of the position to ourselves and to our community, that we regard the function being something of paramount importance. As far as being a single-person department, that's been true for all of nine, five years, since 2009. Prior to that, it was not a single-person department. It was whittled away under budget constraints, other departments too, until it was down to a director and a clerical person. And in 2009, when there were concerns about that clerical person being taken away, I looked back at the combined reports. I remember what happened. Some of you weren't here at the time. We were told not to worry. Yes, it's a single-person department, but we will provide the support staff that this person needs. That came from the town administrator and the selectman five years ago. A different town administrator, for sure, a different Board of Selectmen. But that was the argument that was put forward to defend that questionable whittling away to make it a one-person department. It is now ironic. It's a classic case of blaming the victim, that when you cut and slice and finally get it down to a one person, then you use that as a reason not to elevate it back to its status. I would think in a town committed to diversity, what we should take the one-person department as a spur to try to increase staff by doing a transfer back. We already have a part-time person working with Lloyd Geleno. It also, as was said before, makes that title and that position more attractive, considerably so, when we go out and have a search, which will happen sooner or later, maybe sooner, in order to properly have someone with the best qualifications and experience. It's much more attractive to be in charge of your own budget, possibly in charge of staff, than to be embedded within some other department. That's just a reality of life. Look, I know we have fine leaders in this department, in this town, we do, but every now and then, our leadership needs a little nudge from town meeting. We did that just a couple of years ago. We needed to keep those libraries open on summer Sundays the whole summer long, and town meeting took the lead there in ensuring that that happened, and it's worked, and it's worked well. This is a time also where, although I hate to put myself up against the August Board of Selectmen, or my advisory committee colleagues for that matter, and Mel Klachner, for whom I have the greatest admiration, he has the ability, the authority, the clout and the will to make this work with the head being a department head, and that's the kind of strong statement, I think, we deserve this important function. It is an important function. I believe so. There's important work to be done. Let's do it, and let's do it right, not on the cheap. Let's do it right, the most effective, the most prestigious way we know how. I urge you to support the amendment. Thank you very much.
We're going to hear from Mr. Leary of CTOS on the CTOS amendments.
Richard T. Leary, member of the Committee on Town Organization and Structure. We're a standing committee appointed by the town moderator. Our composition is three former selectmen, a former advisory committee chairman, a former superintendent of schools, former town administrator, and a former town meeting member. From time to time, our committee has looked at various aspects of the Brookline Town Government and recommended reorganizations and consolidations in the interest of greater flexibility, efficiency and effectiveness. Major projects over the years have included a centralized Department of Public Works, a centralized Finance Department, a reorganized Department of Planning and Community Development. And most important of our study projects was the Town Administrator Act of 1985. Some of these changes in the way the town provides services were made at times when the community faced severe financial challenges. For example, in 1981, the first year of Proposition Two and a Half, the Park, Forestry and Cemetery divisions were brought into the Department of Public Works. With respect to Article 10, the administrative component of the new Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations, as proposed by the Selectmen and Advisory Committee, will continue the practice of achieving greater flexibility and efficiencies from existing town resources. CTOS supported the town administrator's proposed administrative arrangement last year, and we are pleased to join him, the selectman and the advisory committee in recommending favorable action on Selectman Daley's motion. We have two relatively minor amendments. They would not materially affect the implementation of the proposal. The first one, as you have heard, is with respect to the members of the Board of Selectmen, a member of the board serving as an ex officio member of this commission. And we would just point out that the Board of Selectmen are the town's chief executive officers. One of their most important functions is the appointment of about thirty boards and commissions, and they are set forth on Page Nine of the 2013 Annual Report. The board is expected to provide overall policy direction and guidance and to stay above the fray, as the saying goes. That was the practice when I served as town administrator. At the present time, no statute or bylaw authorizing the establishment of a board or commission provides for selectman membership. The Selectmen's Town Audit Committee has a board member serving as its chairman, and that's fine, as the audit is clearly a function of the executive branch. With respect to our second proposed amendment, Chapter 270 of the Acts of 1985, the Town Administrator Act, clearly sets forth the town administrator's duties and responsibilities with respect to the appointment and supervision of senior management officials. They look upon him as the boss with all the authority that entails. Rather than bypass the town administrator, we suggest that the director take the matter up with the commission, which can then decide if it warrants their bringing it to the attention of the Board of Selectmen.
You have one minute.
By following this procedure, a positive working relationship between the town administrator and the director should be maintained. It has been many years since the town established a new standalone department. With a substantial override looming over the horizon, accompanied by fee increases and probable service reductions, now is not the time to be moving in that direction. Thank you.
Ms. Sparrow? We'll hear from Ms. Sparrow, and then I'll take a motion for the question. You have five minutes, ma'am.
My name is Valencia Sparrow, and I am speaking against Article 10. I'm sure there were many things said about Article 10 this evening. To me, Article 10 breaks down into three letters: ISM, ism. It's about isms: racism, sexism, et cetera. And all of these isms fall under the umbrella of prejudice. And I'm sure many of you have felt prejudice, one way or another. And the experience of prejudice leaves us wounded and scarred. Currently, the existing articles for the Diversity and New Service Commission allows the commission to investigate complaints of prejudice, of the isms that stop us, that halt us from renting or buying homes, from getting tables at restaurants, from doing something as simple as walking down an aisle in a grocery store. That happens in Brookline. Or maybe we're at a town council meeting, and something that we want to say gets ignored. I'm not saying that the town council purposely ignores us and is guilty of prejudice, but it might seem so to somebody. And that's why our commission is there, to investigate, currently under the article in which we function. Voting no on Article 10 will allow us to continue that. Article 10 will stop that. Article 10 will not allow us to help heal the wounded that enter our doors. Article 10 will not allow us to aid people when they come with their stories. Yes, we'll be able to take their stories down. We'll be able to listen to them. We'll be able to file the complaint and move the complaint on. But what people want is action, and what people want is results. They won't see that with Article 10. Voting no on Article 10 will allow people to see results. We talk about forty years ago. Well, forty years ago, you didn't have the people that are currently sitting in the commission and are sitting there right now. You didn't have the makeup of the commission that is there right now. You didn't have the Asian-Americans, the Afro-Americans, the Indian-Americans that are there right now.
You have one minute.
Voting no on Article 10 will allow us to act. Voting no on Article 10 will give us the freedom. Voting no will keep us from having to put Band-Aids on deep gashes that are caused by your fellow citizens that are ignorant of the laws of this Commonwealth. Thank you.
Question's been called. Is there a second?
Second.
The, um, its motion to terminate the debate requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of --
I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal. The speakers I have remaining on the speaker's list are all in favor of the motion before you, the main motion. Mr. LaScoye, Ms. McNally, Ms. Nabel, Ms. Baker and Ms. Fraley. Ms. Baker would speak in favor of the Rosenthal-Spiegel Amendment, and Ms. Fraley against. Against that background, you see no one at the microphones, yes?
Well, I have a couple people at the microphone. I saw them.
Well, Ms. Brickman at the mic would have a chance to speak if you defeat the motion for the question. All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. We will deal first with the Spiegel-Rosenthal Amendment and to --
I'm the moderator. I have the vote.
If there are seven town meeting members that doubt the vote, I announce the two-thirds vote. If there are seven town meeting members, please stand, and we'll take an electronic vote. There are. This is, are you with us? This is motion for the question, Article 10. You can start the timing whenever you're ready. Okay, all those in favor of terminating debate, please stand and press 1. These are in favor of calling the question and terminating debate, please stand and press 1. You may be seated. Those opposed to terminating the debate, please stand and press 2. You may be seated. Those abstaining, press 3. And you can change your vote at any time. Motion fails to carry. We will continue with Mr. LaScoye. We will continue with Mr. Lescoye. Okay, Ms. McNally. Certainly. If you wish, you can come to the podium, too.
No, this is closer. Rita McNally, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Member, member of the Selectmen's Diversity EEO, and I forget the rest.[634.32][634.32](laughter) I think we ended up with Community Relations as well added in. And I'm a former member of the Human Relations Commission for 13 years, when it was a separate department. And what I'm going to speak to is the Rosenthal and Stanley-Spiegel amendment, and I disagree with it even though I wish it were true. Yes, words do matter, and putting someone who is going to head this very complicated group needs to have the status and the willingness on the part of the whole administration. There has to be a commitment there. But unfortunately, in the very recent past, that wasn't, a commitment was not there, and the department was shadowed. We had no funding to do some of the different committee assignments that we wanted to do to help the community know more about the issues going on. The advisory board really was committed to not giving more money. We lost even our secretary that was supposed to be our part-time secretary. We just didn't have the staff to help us do. And then members became dispirited, and finally, it was difficult to get people even to come because what was there to do? We tried to talk things. We tried to get training. We tried many, many things. It would be great that we could think that, yes, it's important to have that status if people think that it's a status. In other communities, they don't feel that it's a status, that there's an office of diversity and people work together. So I feel that if you start out as an office and try and give as much backing to the commission so that they can really begin melding together and finding different activities to do to bring themselves recognition from the community, that it would be good. And then, within that five-year period, if you find that they need more support and if there isn't the integration of working together with the department that we had a great deal of stress with and a name that sounded the same, so... But I think that the person that is Mel Kleckner, he has a commitment to diversity, and he's proved it. Last year, for the Martin Luther King celebration, it was Mel King and Ken Goldstein who stayed on Friday nights at 4 o'clock so that small committee could meet and we could bring together a celebration in January. That, to me, showed commitment. This was Friday. I hated it sometimes. I'd say, geez, can't these guys get together at 4 o'clock some other night? But it was always Friday, and they were there, and chipper, and having worked ahead and that. When you see that kind of a commitment from the people who are running the town, you know that other commitments are there. And now Ken has sent out an email, there's going to be a community commitment, and the Board of Selectmen have supported that, that the Martin Luther King is going to be, that celebration is going to be part of the community's commitment, so that it's never going to fall aside because there aren't enough people to help with it. I think that's great. They're also working on a separate group to put together a celebration to honor a man that was a great opera singer, and that was Roland Hayes, our neighbor in our community, one of us.
You have one minute.
Thank you. So I think that once your Board of Selectmen show commitment and your town manager shows commitment, you can keep it as an office, but not forget it, because it's this group here, the town meeting, that are the ones that really are going to have the oversight responsibility this time. You can't have just a committee having that. Thank you. So please do not go to a department and department head. It's not going to work right now. Within a couple of years, it may, if that group is able to form itself well and work towards the various commitments that are set out for it. Thank you.
Ms. Brickman? And Ms. Nabel, will you come forward, please?
Edie Brickman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, could we have a answer for my question from Mr. Kleckner? I would like to have his comment on why he would suggest a director of this commission, for this group, and what his reasons are, and if we have any precedent for this in our town and how it works. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Kleckner doesn't have a vote on this issue, and if you prefer to have the Selectmen answer, Ms. Brickman, I defer to your wishes, Mr. Kleckner. But you can also respond to it. Okay?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mel Kleckner, Town Administrator. So I do not support the proposal that requires an organizational unit to become a separate department at this time. I will say that the term "department" is not defined in our town bylaws or in Massachusetts law, for what I can understand. But I think we all understand that a department is a standalone government unit that has a separate budget, staff, and administrative and programmatic discretion. Currently, the town has 14 separate departments, not including the school department, the veterans department. There is no veterans department. It is a part of the Health and Human Services Department. And so, but all of these departments, these 14 departments, have sufficient level of responsibility and a scale of budgetary authority that merits having the infrastructure of a separate department. It's been talked about that this is similar to the Human Resources Department, and I would respectfully disagree. The Human Resources Department is a full-service department with staff of six employees, operating budget of over half a million dollars, and a responsibility for over $25 million of health insurance and other benefits. When Steve Bressler did retire, I proposed a reorganization that eliminated that department that had evolved over the time. And I did so because a small department does not have the economies of scale that make sense in an organization. And I felt that the responsibility for this department could be merged and consolidated with the Health and Human Services Department because it had such a synergy and was, they provided many of the same types of programs. They were already staffing the Women's Commission, the Disability Commission. They were already providing programs for youth veterans and domestic violence. And what has happened is that there has become some synergy and enthusiasm that this reorganization has created. And I'm afraid that organizations have personalities like people, and when an organization becomes a separate unit, I fear that the kind of synergies and cooperation would be diminished. I just, I do want to say that, as its name implies, a department head is a head of a separate department. But that does not mean that we don't have many significant and influential responsible managers. If you look on your town report on page 17, you see a picture of all the management staff of the town. And within that staff, they're not all department heads. For example, the Director of Parks and Open Space, the Highway Director, they're two positions that have significant authority and discretion. They're not department heads. The Town Comptroller has significant townwide authority for municipal finance and expenditures, but it's not a department head. The bylaw that's proposed that gives the CDO, I think, a lot of special status and discretion. It's appointed by the Board of Selectmen. It reports to the Town Administrator, and I think it really does elevate the stature of this position. And I am totally committed, and I can assure Mr. Spiegel and others, that no matter what this town meeting does, I will work hard to make this office a fully functioning department and meet the goals that Article 10 proposes.
It seems, sorry, Bobby Nabel, Precinct 11. It seems clear that few who support this warrant article would say that it is a perfect solution. There are questions about whether the commission has too little power, whether the voice of the Chief Diversity Officer will be heated, whether the changes recommended will lead to a more diverse workforce, whether the town of Brookline will become more welcoming to all members of protected classes as residents, employees, or visitors. But it is a beginning. Over the next year, we will have a chance to see in what ways it is effective, as well as in what ways it needs to be improved if we are to achieve the goals we have in mind. For those who think the original version of the bylaw was stronger, what accomplishments can be attributed to it since it was passed 40 years ago? Policy alone does not bring about results. What will bring change is not only the diligence of the commission and the Chief Diversity Officer, but our commitment as town meeting members to reading carefully the various reports, understanding the policies and procedures by which the town operates, holding accountable those responsible for implementing those policies and procedures, evaluating outcomes, and when it seems called for, advocating strengthening of policy. What this warrant article offers is a starting point. Where it goes from here, all of us will have a role in determining. I urge you to support warrant Article 10.
Mr. Richmond?[1325.83][1325.83](applause)
I had a point of information. My name is Clint Richmond, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. This actually picks up on something that Ms. Nabel just said. The advocates who vote, who urge us to vote no on Article 10 would have us preserve the ability of the commission to do prosecuting of some sort. I was wondering how many of those cases have been brought in any time period that anyone can remember that the commission has done that in the past?
You could hear a pin drop, Mr. Richmond.[1367.15][1367.15](laughter) Do you have an answer? No one in the front of the room knows the answer to your question, Mr. Richmond. Ms. Baker?
I'm Joanna Baker, Precinct 13. I attended numerous meetings of Selectwoman Daily's Hard Working Committee. I also attended advisory committee, ad hoc subcommittee meetings. I attended one meeting of the CTOs where they discussed this article. In my professional life, I have an MBA in organizational behavior and marketing and have worked as a retained executive search consultant, a recruiter. In that capacity, in the 1990s, I developed some expertise in assisting employers in crafting strategies that would increase their success at attracting and retaining highly capable people of color to their workforce. I interviewed experts on diversity recruiting, and I advised my clients on what it would take to achieve their goals. I can tell you it takes leadership, commitment of resources, and it takes a while to see results. So I was disappointed that the Board of Selectmen's Diversity, Inclusion, and Affirmative Action Committee acquiesced with great respect for the Town Administrator to his persistent assertions that the position being created not be established as a department head. We are clearly not a highly desirable employer right now for the most qualified candidates who have many employment options, who are people of color. We are not that. So under discussion here is how much power and influence could the CDO, Director of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, have? What is needed in this role is an individual with the capacity to influence people in town who already have power. That kind of influence is exercised department head to department head or supervisor to supervisee. I don't get to coach or give critical feedback to someone who is at the same level as my boss. I just don't. Power doesn't work that way. That's why the CDO should be a department head with direct reporting to the Town Administrator and should oversee their own shop. The Town Administrator should directly and frequently help the CDO accomplish their goals. And I'm pleased that no matter the outcome of this evening's vote, we have that commitment from Mr. Kleckner. The CDO position requires someone who is shrewd, discerning, sophisticated, experienced, and gutsy. This office may be required to work on subtle aspects of management, leadership, and culture change within many sectors of our town's workforce. People hate change. Leading change is a very difficult task. It will require the support and leadership of our Town Administrator, the Board of Selectmen, and, as Ms. Nabel said, town meeting. If Mr. Kleckner or a future Town Administrator is at times made uncomfortable by what this individual asserts, that may be an indication that our Chief Diversity Officer, Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Office may be doing their job extremely well. Change makes people uncomfortable. We're looking for someone who is capable of handling that. So I believe that both passion and professionalism will be required to fulfill the promise of the position that is described. Parents of children in our public schools report that our schools have a strong curriculum about the U.S. Civil Rights Movement. Since we highlight civil rights in our schools, I believe we should also express our continuing commitment to the values promoted in the Civil Rights Movement by highlighting this position in our town organizational structure by naming the role a department head. To be effective, the occupant of this new role must be perceived with stature very close to that of the Town Administrator. At times, this Chief Diversity Officer will speak directly, not only to the Town Administrator, but also to the Board of Selectmen, who are ultimately accountable for whether Brookline becomes a forward planning and effective leader in attracting and promoting a diverse workforce in our town. The department head designation shall afford this individual gravitas, authority, expertise, respect with their fellow department heads within our town's workforce.
One minute.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Spiegel and Rosenthal that this title and direct reporting structure to the Town Administrator will attract stronger candidates. The department head designation also signals our community's commitment to the values described in Article 10. Expert volunteers served on Nancy's committee. They worked very hard. They did research. They drafted. Bernard, unbelievably hard work. Michael Sandmann, unbelievably hard work. Really wonderful knitting together of good minds. And they're even going to work further when this is done, when tonight's vote is over, unfair housing. If the Town Administrator comes to you, Selectmen, and says the CDO is not working out, please check with your commissioners and check with your conscience, because maybe the new CDO will be holding our Town Administrator's feet to the fire in a way that they should be held, and it hasn't been done before. So the current budget includes no funds for this-
Please conclude, ma'am.
...which is shameful. I hope you'll join me in supporting Mr. Spiegel and Mr. Rosenthal's amendment. Thank you.
Ms. Fraley? Sorry, I've called Ms. Fraley to the microphone.
Thank you. Regina Fraley, Precinct 16. I'm going to speak to procedure rather than to substance. All the amendments are about the fears and suppositions about substance. But the late, great Leo Gross, Professor, International Law Professor, taught me and others, 95% of all cases are won or lost on procedure. So I want to talk to procedure here. Some years ago, the town established an efficiency committee, and that committee was headed by recent Selectman, recently retired, Dick Banker. We attended, it was nearly five months, and it was up to nine and 10 hours a week because of the subcommittees that were created. Dick and I were the two who went to every single one. I had the wonderful pleasure of seeing just about every single employee in the town, its leadership, come to those meetings and fight for their stake. They were the stakeholders of anything that would be reorganized, and that was ultimately going to be a means to the end of creating efficiency. That was what the stated goal was. That was what the stated goal was. It was like a house cleaning. No town department was unexamined, and the missions were regarded, the means to achieving those missions, and can we, can we tighten it? Can we tweak it? When our current town administrator, Mel Kleckner, was hired and was determined and had his own review of the previous efficiency committee, and he, being a technocrat trained to do this, saw the merits of reorganizing, and, believe me, the, the, the department head, Steve Bressler's position was not the only one that was targeted. But in fact, contrary to many of the things I've heard over the last year and a half, there was no disrespect for, for Mr. Bressler. In fact, reorganization in some areas were immediately implemented and others were delayed, and Steve's job was one of them. They wanted to retain him and allow him to leave at a time he wanted to leave. So, you know, let's, let's not defame or have any kind of rumors to the contrary. It wasn't what I observed. Over the past year, and despite many of the meetings I've gone to where concerns, worries, negativity, very false suppositions about how the process works, often by the most well-meaning people, despite that, even some of the greatest critics have said, hey, look, it's working. It's working because in the end, it isn't the title. It's the people. It's the character of the people who implement, who have the vision to see something that needs to be done, and we have it in Dr. Jellino, and we have it in Mel Kleckner. This is not a body that's going to let that pass without that being true. So I'm not worried about the future, whether you tweak it a year from now, five years from now, whatever. There's people in this room right now I know will stand up and do something about it. But even with all those constraints in the past year, it's improved things. Imagine what would happen. Just imagine what would happen if we gave our full support to making this work, and that doesn't mean there can't be criticism. It doesn't mean there can't be suggestions, positive, helpful suggestions. It means that we work together because we have the same goal.
One minute.
Thank you. So I speak in favor of the town administrator and Nancy Daley's committee. I understand the amendments, and I speak very unequivocally against the Spiegel and Rosenthal amendment. Let's not get caught up in verbiage. Let's look at the process, look at how democratic it has been, and how successful it already is. Thank you.
There's a motion for the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, we have exhausted the speaker list. You see the two town meeting members standing at the microphone on the motion for the question. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. We'll deal first with the Spiegel-Rosenthal amendment, which...
I request a recorded vote.
Recorded vote of the thirty-five town meeting members who would like a recorded vote, and I'm sure there will be. Yes, there are. Okay, this is Spiegel-Rosenthal amendment, Article 10. Just so we're clear on what we're voting on, look on page five of the pink supplement, section 3.14.2, third paragraph, first line. Mr. Spiegel and Rosenthal would insert after the words "The Director/CDO shall" the words "be a department head/senior administrator and shall report etc." Okay, those in favor of the Spiegel-Rosenthal amendment, please stand and press 1. Thank you. Those opposed, you may be seated. Those opposed, please stand and press 2. Abstentions, press 3. Change your vote at any time within the forty-second voting period. Motion carries by a vote of 106 in favor, ninety-five against, and five abstentions. Make that 174 to 94 to 5. 107 in favor, 94 opposed, five abstentions. We'll deal next with the two CTOs-sponsored amendments, the first of which appears in the very same paragraph we just amended, but the second line. The CTOs would change the Board of Selectmen, BOs, to the word "commission." Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion fails. Second proposed amendment is on page four of the pink supplement, so back one page, and at the bottom of the next-to-the-last paragraph, the CTOs-sponsored amendment would be to delete the next-to-the-last sentence, to delete the sentence reading, "The BOs shall select one of its members to serve ex officio as a non-voting member of the commission." Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion fails. On the main motion, as amended, and bear in mind that paragraph seven on page, the bottom of page seven of the pink supplement... Can we move for a recorded vote? ...is found on the yellow supplement. You want a recorded vote?
Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, are there thirty-five town meeting members who would like a recorded There are. This is main motion, Article 10. You can start the time whenever you're ready. All right, all those in favor of the main motion as amended, please stand and press Thank you. You may be seated. Those opposed, please stand and press 2. Abstentions, press 3, and you can change your vote at any time during the voting period. Motion carries by a vote of 185 in favor, seventeen opposed, and six abstentions. We move now to Article 11. Before we get there, let me correct the recorded vote last night on the Driscoll School vote. The vote, and would the town clerk please make note of this, was 181 in favor, forty-three opposed, and five abstentions. Article 11. Motion offered under Article 11 is found on page 11-11 over to 1117, the creation of a neighborhood conservation district in the Greater Toxteth neighborhood. The motion includes the map on page 11-17. Moved by Ms. DeWitt, seconded by Ms. Banker. I call on Mr. Bell.
Can we have our first slide, please?
May you give us your name, please, and address.
My name is Paul Bell, and I live at 35 Dale Street.
Thank you, that's Precinct 3.
Precinct 3. Good evening. My name is Paul Bell, and I am chairperson of the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission. I'm so pleased to be before you tonight on behalf of all of the commission recommending approval of the Greater Toxteth Neighborhood Conservation District, the first neighborhood-sponsored conservation district to be proposed since the commission was founded. The Neighborhood Conservation District is a new planning tool that has been gaining popularity among forward-looking cities and towns across the country. As land use planning has evolved over the last 100 years or so, we have learned that multiple tools are needed to address the various urban planning challenges that we face. NCDs allow the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission and an individual neighborhood working together to identify the particular elements and characteristics that are fundamental to the identity of their neighborhood, and then craft guidelines and standards to protect and preserve those elements. The town of Brookline recognized the value of this new tool, and so Town Meeting passed the enabling bylaw and established the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission back in 2011. This set the stage for the neighborhoods to come forward and make use of it. The Greater Toxteth neighborhood was thrilled to learn that the town had passed the NCD bylaw because it is exactly what they need to address the challenges and threats that currently face their neighborhood. And so here we are before you tonight. Can I have the next slide, please? So here is an aerial view of the Greater Toxteth neighborhood. Up at the top, you will see Parsons Field. Vertically on the right, you'll see Aspenwall Street, which forms the boundary on that side. Vertically on the left, it is bordered by Francis Street, and horizontally from top to bottom, you have Harrison Street, Toxteth Street, and Perry Street. Lawrence School is up off the page in the upper left-hand corner, so that should get you oriented to the district. May I have the next slide, please? And here is the district in plan view with the proposed district boundaries. In this view, Parsons Field is on the right. Also, you will see that it abuts the Lawrence Local Historic District, which is marked by crosshatching in the upper right. In this view, you can begin to see some of the key elements that are valued by the neighborhood and provide the foundation for such a strong and close-knit community. Note that there's a very consistent pattern of scale, massing, and placement of the buildings on the properties. This provides for lots of open space and the creation of these continuous rear and front yard view corridors that you can see. Next slide, please. Another element of the neighborhood that they have identified as fundamental is the almost universal and consistent use of these open front porches that you see. These porches are incredibly effective at facilitating and fostering communication and connection among the neighbors. All of these elements, the pattern, scale, and massing of the buildings, the front and rear yard view corridors, and the open front porches work to promote strong bonds among the neighbors and a strong sense of community, which is ultimately what the neighbors value and what they are asking you to protect tonight. Now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Catherine Brown and Ann Turner from the neighborhood to give you a better understanding of how all of these elements are so fundamental to the identity of the neighborhood and why we need to protect it. So here is Catherine Brown.
Thank you, Paul, and good evening. My name is Catherine Brown, and I'm a resident at 65 Toxteth Street, Precinct 3. Could I have the next slide, please? So what's so valuable about this particular neighborhood that so many people would devote so many hours to bringing this warrant article before you this evening? This is the story not only of the homes in this neighborhood, but also of the connections between the people who inhabit them. Just after the Civil War, the land in this area of Brookline was first carved up into house lots. For the next fifty years or so, houses were added until all of the lots were completed. Each house was added, as each house was added, builders followed an established pattern. The houses were set back further from the street and the sidewalk than was necessary, and a uniform line for the front plane of the homes was established. At the rear, the houses also lined up, providing a view corridor through the backyards. Now, the interesting thing about the early development is that the lot size varied greatly. Most of the lots were around 5,000 square feet, but a good number of lots were as large as 10,000 square feet. The effect of this is not only a pleasant variety as you walk down the street, but enough space was left to plant lots of trees, and the large trees are the ones, one of the first things you notice when walking through this neighborhood. The other distinguishing feature of this neighborhood is the open front porches, as Paul alluded to earlier. Next slide, please. Porches were a common feature of Victorian architecture, but as it turns out, they not only add beauty, they strongly influence the development of community. The porches act as a bridge, as a transition, if you will, from the private space of the home to the public space on the sidewalk. As you walk through the neighborhood, the porches, often populated with people, toys, dogs, and children, give you a feeling of a friendly, welcoming community. Once established, the basic streetscape, that is, the number of homes, the pattern and proportions, and the scale and massing of the homes, has remained basically unchanged for over 100 years. However, by the 1970s, the neighborhood was on its knees. The houses had become dilapidated. The town stepped in and set up a HUD block grant program of low-interest rate construction loans, and with this little bit of encouragement from the town, new families moved in, and gradually chimneys, roofs, and porches were all repaired and restored. At the same time, neighbors started to look at community problems. Break-ins and school vandalism were becoming common. The Lawrence Neighborhood Association was formed so the neighbors could tackle these and other issues together as a group. Next slide, please. Now, decades later, we have a vibrant neighborhood where we are still connected with one another. We have regular potluck block parties, and people who move away keep coming back to them to see their old friends. We share landscapes, we share trees, we share keys to each other's homes, some neighbors have even shared a dog. Without altering the pattern of the streetscape or the footprints of the houses, the homes have been able to adapt over a century and a half to the changing needs, and while doing so, they have fostered strong bonds of community. We know that this is the real meaning of a neighborhood, and it is worth preserving, and this is why we have, as neighbors, worked together to bring this warrant article before you this evening. Thank you. I'm now pleased to introduce my neighbor, Ann Turner.
Thanks, Catherine. I'm Ann Turner, 97, Toxteth Street, Precinct 3. And I'd like to start by giving special thanks to the NCD Commission and staff, who took up our cause and with whom we've worked for many, many hours to getting to this point tonight. The bylaw we propose is in response to several building projects in our area that have upset the stability that we have had for well over 100 years, and it makes it clear that we are exposed and vulnerable. The first project was on Kent Street, when a developer attempted to raise an architecturally significant home and replace it with a townhouse cluster. The Lawrence Historic District circumvented that action and saved the home. The neighbors in the district, while sympathetic to the situation, felt that an historic district didn't address the concerns specific to our particular homes, so opted out of the LHD that we now abut. Next slide, please. The second event was a fire on Harrison Street that destroyed a home there. On the left is the home before the fire, and on the right is as it was rebuilt. As you can see, the front porches are not replaced, and instead, the home came closer to the street. Shed dormers maximized the property on the lot, and we now have a home that doesn't engage the street as it did previously. Next slide. Most recently is the massive project on Toxteth Street, which was our tipping point. On this aerial shot of the home, notice the size of the original house relative to its neighbors and the tree canopy, providing broad open space enjoyed by Toxteth, Aspenwall, and Perry Street neighbors. The red box roughly outlines the footprint of the addition. Next slide. Next is a more current shot of the property. To the right of the red line is the original home, and to the left of the line, instead of open space, neighbors from Aspenwall and Perry, and all down Toxteth on that side of the street now see nothing but the black mansard roof. And the Aspenwall neighbors see this. It looks like a string of townhomes, but in fact, it's the side of a two-family property. It looks like a string of townhomes, but in fact, it's the side of a two-family property. The developer added some forty-one hundred square feet on the back of a forty-two hundred square-foot home, an eighty-three hundred square-foot building on an eighty-three hundred square-foot lot. Every was built out as of right. Next slide. And now, a last look at the project on town's GIS map with an indication of the new structure. See the blocked view corridors and many other vulnerable large lots on Toxteth and Perry, where we'd be naive to think it won't happen again. And with all of this, there was never a neighborhood meeting at which we could see the plans, question the scale, or attempt to take mitigating factors. A massive, mature beech tree was destroyed. Neighbors' trees were damaged, adjacent yards were undercut with the excavation, and of course, the view corridors eliminated. This was done as of right, no variances were required. So, what did we do? We organized and learned about the new NCD tool and process. We had several meetings with residents throughout the district. Most every homeowner attended at least one of these meetings. Note that it was critical to be as transparent as possible and protect the strong neighborhood relations and sense of community that we enjoy. No one wants to feel awkward at our neighborhood parties. So, we publicized with flyers and emails, took notes, sent minutes, and throughout the process, our email list grew to one hundred and fourteen residents. In these meetings, we were pleasantly surprised to find that we could agree on a few critical core values and principles around massing, scale, porches, and view corridors, front and back, that we wanted to protect. We used real projects to understand what the proposed triggers would mean for each of our properties. We then approached the NCD Commission with very solid district boundaries. We had a hearing with them, and then a neighborhood meeting that the NCD Commission attended to gauge support and answer questions. This was attended by some fifty residents. After refining the proposed guidelines, the town began formal outreach to validate the support we were confident we had. The commission mailed an official package to all property owners of record. It included the bylaw, a summary sheet, map of the proposed district, the survey, and a reply envelope. We also shared our email list with the commission staff, who sent the same package electronically to all residents that we could. Next slide. And here you see the results. There are ninety-one properties in the proposed district, and seventy-nine of us responded that we were in favor of an NCD, nearly eighty-seven percent. By design, the bylaw isn't onerous, and it won't prevent anyone from expanding to a reasonable extent. But it does require that those who own homes in the district respect the existing patterns of size, scale, massing, open spaces, and of course, our beautiful porches. We want to ensure that neighbors are notified and have a voice when projects are undertaken that could impact their properties. We are prepared to sacrifice some rights and even some future financial gains in order to protect the quality of life that we have and the desirability of our neighborhood. We ask you to support the wishes of the residents of our neighborhood, who have so overwhelmingly indicated their desire for an NCD to protect the streets on which we live. Thank you. Turn it over to Paul to close.
Next slide, please. So, here is how the proposed bylaw works. If a property owner undertakes a project that is going to increase the living space above ground by more than thirty, thirty-three percent, it is subject, excuse me, by more than fifteen percent, it is subject to review by the commission. Generally, a project that increases the living space above ground by more than thirty-three percent over what exists today would likely be determined to negatively impact the fundamental elements and characteristics of the neighborhood that you have learned about tonight, and so it would not be permitted. In addition, any activity that impacts the open front porches or advances the front facade of a house towards the street is subject to review and would typically not be permitted. The neighborhood has been very clear and united in what they want to preserve: the pattern of scale, massing, and placement of the houses on the properties, the shared front and rear yard viewscapes, the open front porches that foster social interaction and community. They have strong support. Nearly eighty-seven percent of the property owners have approved the proposal. The Toxteth Neighborhood came to us because they know they have a wonderful neighborhood with a strong community that helps make Brookline the special place that it is for all of us. The neighborhood showed us that without action, these qualities are threatened. Nearly fifty years ago, the neighborhood faced another crisis. The town stepped up to help with what was then a new and innovative tool in the form of the HUD block grants, and, in partnership with the neighborhood, it was a huge success. Since then, the neighborhood has recovered and thrived. The original houses have been restored and are now beautifully maintained, and the neighbors are a very happy and close-knit community. You heard them tell you that tonight. Now, it is time for the town to help again with another new and innovative tool in the form of the Neighborhood Conservation District. On behalf of the commission and the neighborhood, we value your support, and we ask you to vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. DeWitt?
Betsy DeWitt, speaking for the Board of Selectmen. Under this article, the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission proposes to establish the Greater Toxteth Neighborhood Conservation District by adding section five-point-one-oh-point-three-point-d-point-two as an amendment to Article five-point-ten of the town's bylaws. The area is currently zoned T5 with a Florida area ratio of one, which generally allows one single-family dwelling or one two-family dwelling, either in a single building or as a pair of attached townhouses on a five-thousand-square-foot site. Inside the proposed district, there is one property zoned M1 that could allow a multifamily dwelling, but the lot is too small for additional development. There are, however, a number of properties that are not fully built out within the current zoning envelope, where expansion would be possible, and as you've seen from the presentation, has already happened. The proposed NCD neighborhood district is also adjacent to the Lawrence Historic District. Most people familiar with the town's zoning bylaw would agree that it is complex, difficult for laypeople to understand, me included, I had to consult with staff, and it sometimes permits unintended results. The NCD by law offers neighborhoods a tool to preserve and protect the special characteristics that define the area. They must identify the qualities that are valued by homeowners and establish consensus around the types of protection to be provided. The resulting guidelines then inform the required design review of any proposed modifications by the NCD Commission. The petitioners have described the process that was followed, including meetings with the preservation and planning staff, meetings with the NCD commissioners, outreach to residents, neighborhood meetings, and walking tours, followed by drafting a map and guidelines for the proposed district, which are on pages eleven dash eleven through seventeen in the combined reports. After a public hearing on the proposal in March two thousand and fourteen by the NCD Commission, neighbors were surveyed, and a strong majority of eighty-six percent were in favor of having a new district. The guidelines reflect the components that make up the fabric of this neighborhood: a generous streetscape with sidewalks and easy-walkability, mature trees and plantings, houses with porches, and a compatible scale of architecture with a variety of styles and detailing, generous backyard view corridors, and density, but also with a sense of open space. The proposed district guidelines are designed to protect the harmonious appearance of the neighborhood and its architecture while allowing variety and visual details. And while it is not a zoning amendment, the Planning Board discussed the proposed article and has noted that it, quote, "represents one of the strongest cases yet for establishment of a neighborhood conservation district." The Board of Selectmen agrees and recommend, and also commends the neighborhood for its well-planned, thorough, and thoughtful process. The NCD, new NCD district, provides an approach with strong protection based on shared values and against undesired development impacts on this neighborhood. The unanimous Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action on the Article eleven vote on pages eleven dash eleven through eleven dash eighteen of the combined reports.
Ms. Benka? And I, I'd like to mention that we have nothing but proponents speaking on this article, so those of you proponents, so those of you who are, who have prepared speeches, do your best to eliminate redundancy as you present to Town Meeting. Ms. Benka?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Levenka, Town Meeting member, precinct thirteen, speaking for the Advisory Committee. As you've heard, Article eleven has been submitted by the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission, and its approval by Town Meeting tonight will establish the Greater Toxteth Neighborhood Conservation District. As you've also heard, behind the article is the story of a group of neighbors who saw the visual harmony of their street disrupted by the construction of an as-of-right eighty-three-hundred-square-foot two-family home. As a result of that project, they decided to come together to see if they could thoughtfully shape the future development of their neighborhood. Like Goldilocks, they explored some options: a change in zoning, not enough; a local historic district, way too much; a neighborhood conservation district, just right. NCDs enable participants to specifically target the physical characteristics of a neighborhood that property owners want to preserve and protect. So, one of the early challenges these neighbors faced was to identify commonly-held neighborhood visual values and preservation goals. What features, above all others, did they want to preserve or perpetuate? Their answer: the overall scale of massing and height of existing homes, broad backyard view sheds and view corridors, those shared landscapes whose benefits extend to abutters and others in the neighborhood, existing front yard setbacks, many of them more generous than required by existing zoning, and front porches, those architectural elements that enhance the street's social fabric and mediate the space between street and house. A second challenge involved defining project thresholds that would trigger review by the commission. Those thresholds have been described by previous speakers, so I will not repeat them here. Suffice it to say that the thresholds, as well as the guidelines to be used by the NCD commissioners in evaluating proposals, were developed with the agreed-upon neighborhood preservation goals in mind. It should be pointed out that under this proposal, some modest flexibility in the application of the design guidelines is allowed, and a claim of substantial hardship is specifically identified as a factor for the commission to consider in its deliberations. The vast majority of Advisory Committee members agree that an NCD designation in this instance is an appropriate mechanism to protect this neighborhood from future incompatible development without imposing unduly burdensome regulations on homeowners, particularly those who may wish to enlarge their houses. We applaud the proponents for their investment of time and energy in outreach, discussion, debate, and compromise, and we recognize the dedication of members of the NCD Commission in working with neighbors and other property owners. The success of all these efforts paid off and is reflected in the numbers. Out of ninety-one property owners, owners, almost eighty-seven percent were in favor. In response to those who questioned the goal of creating a neighborhood frozen in time, the Advisory Committee notes that none of the proposed guidelines exclude development or changes to existing buildings, nor do they prohibit contemporary architectural styles, materials, or technologies. We also note that increased density is permissible, just not in a way that would disregard the existing scale and massing of neighboring homes. As to the emphasis on the preservation and perpetuation, excuse me, perpetuation of open porches, the committee believes such commitment reflects the role that porches are viewed as playing in encouraging social interaction, one of the key ingredients that transform what would be a mere residential area into a neighborhood. By a vote of fifteen to one to two, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Sean Lynn Jones from precinct one.
Not quite as close to the mic, Mr. Lynn Jones.
I'm also co-chair of the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance, the BNA. I'm not speaking for the BNA tonight, however, because the BNA hasn't had a chance to hold a meeting on considering endorsing Article eleven. But my support for this article reflects a lot of experience over the years with that organization. The BNA has held a lot of meetings on how neighborhoods can find tools to preserve their character, how they can prevent inappropriate development and encourage appropriate development. And those meetings convinced a lot of BNA members that neighborhood conservation districts, NCDs, could help preserve Brookline neighborhoods. But initially, the reaction from town officials tended to be negative, or at least not interested. The preservation tool of creating an NCD only became available when the prospect of expansion of Hancock Village loomed, and Town Meeting, a few years ago, adopted an NCD bylaw. But that was an unusual case that was unlikely to set a precedent. As Mr. Bell has pointed out, the Greater Toxteth NCD is, will be the first Brookline NCD to be established at the initiative of the neighborhood's residents. NCDs have a lot of advantages, some of which have been mentioned before. They're more flexible than local historic districts. They can also cover more issues than local historic districts, including landscapes and buildings, parts of buildings that can't be seen by, from a public way. They are more likely, in some cases, to win wide support from a neighborhood. But they're also more difficult in many ways from an LHD. The very fact that they don't have a one-size-fits-all approach means that neighbors have to work a lot harder to figure out exactly what the provisions of the guidelines will be, and they have to win the wide support the Town Meeting expects to see before voting in favor of creating an NCD. I think this is a wonderful example of how the process can work. I applaud the initiative of the residents of the proposed Greater Toxteth NCD. I thank the NCD Commission for all its hard work and support. I urge Town Meeting to vote favorable action on Article eleven to help this neighborhood preserve its character. And perhaps most important, I hope that other Brookline neighborhoods will take a close look at this article and consider whether an NCD would be good for them. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Questions been called. Is there a second?
Second.
I have on my list of speakers Mr. Boers, Mr. Steinfeld, Mr. Koff, and Mr. and Mrs. Duert. All those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries, my goodness, almost unanimously. On the motion on page eleven dash eleven over to eleven dash seventeen, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a vote of two hundred and eight to two. Article twelve. The motion under Article twelve is on page twelve dash twenty-four over to twelve dash thirty-three. It's the entire Noise Control bylaw with relatively few amendments, and those are underlined or otherwise noted. It's moved by Ms. Jonas, seconded by Ms. Daly. Let me point out one wording correction, which is a mistake that the petitioners agreed to correct as follows. On page twelve dash twenty-four, section B two, the section that starts emergency generators used for power outages, that first line should read, "Emergency generators used for power outages or testing as required." Power outages, delete the comma, or testing as required, et cetera. The, Mr. Richmond moves that at the bottom of page twelve dash twenty-five, subparagraph M, leaf blowers, the motion reads, "Any portable machine carried by hand or configured as a backpack." Mr. Richmond would have us insert F-
No, no, I withdrew that.
Strike, strike Mr. Richmond's amendment. The Board of Selectmen, however, would have us delete the underlined language in subparagraph M, so that the words "carried by hand or configured as a backpack" would be deleted, and that's moved by Ms. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Goldstein. So, we only have one amendment. So we only have one amendment. I call on Ms. Jonas for the Advisory Committee.
I'm Alisa Jonas, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee on warrant Article 12. The petitioner, Fred Lebo, is a sound engineer, and he played a major role, not only in drafting Brookline's Noise Control Bylaw, but also the bylaw for Boston. And over the years, he identified a few shortcomings of the current bylaw, which he has sought to rectify with this warrant article. He was made aware of two of the issues by other municipalities, funnily enough, who were interested in using our Noise Control Bylaw as a model for their own, but they found some of the terms of our bylaw to be confusing. And so, of the first two modifications that I'm going to discuss that are proposed by Article 12, yeah, the first two are to clarify terms. Under Article 8.15.2, et cetera, of the bylaw, emergency generators are exempt from the restrictions imposed by the law. But absent any guidance as to which particular types of generators should be treated as used for emergency purposes, some members of the public have assumed that home generators that are used even during periods of brief power outages are exempt. In drafting the bylaw, however, it was intended that the term track the definition used in the State Building Code under which home generators are treated as used for convenience absent a pressing need, and so should be subject to noise restrictions. The warrant article remedies this by specifying that the term be applied as defined by the State Building Code. And the Advisory Committee thinks this should enable the town to more easily enforce the bylaw to home generators. The second clarification deals with leaf blowers. Only portable leaf blowers are subject to the bylaw, but the lack of a definition of portability makes it somewhat unclear. And so, Article 12 provides a definition specifying that portable leaf blowers are those either carried by hand or carried as a backpack. Some members of the Advisory Committee were concerned that with a more clear and specific definition of portability, landscapers who currently use either handheld or backpack-type leaf blowers might be tempted to convert to lawn mower types. But it was felt by the Advisory Committee that this might be more appropriately addressed by specifically expanding the coverage of the noise bylaw rather than leaving the term "portability" unclear. The third change would give the town the option of using a second type of standard for measuring noise levels. The current bylaw specifies that only standards under the American National Standards Institute be used. The article permits the town to also use international acoustical standards. This change would give the town greater flexibility, enabling it to choose from a wider range of equipment, which has become more important over recent years as more American manufacturers have chosen to no longer produce such sound meter equipment. European meters have another advantage, which is that they have a USB port to download data from the meter to the computer, and that provides a means to store the noise measurement in case of any kinds of disputes in court. And the final change provides a proxy measure of nighttime ambient noise based on an adjustment of daytime noise measurements. A sampling of sound levels in various parts of Brookline showed that there was roughly a 10 decibel difference between nighttime and daytime in both quieter and more active parts of town. The proposed amendment thus would enable the town to estimate nighttime levels by making measurements during the day and making a 10 decibel adjustment downward for nighttime. Apparently, previously, the town's building commissioner walked around Brookline neighborhoods late at night to measure sound levels. And with this amendment, these nocturnal peripatetic requirements would no longer be required of town staff. So because the modifications included in this article will facilitate enforcement of the Noise Control Bylaw, the Advisory Committee, by unanimous vote, recommends positive action on warrant Article 12.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Andrew Fisher, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 13, and one of the proponents of the leaf blower article that is wondering why, if it ain't broke, what are we trying to fix? Article 12 is a solution looking for a problem, and if you look hard enough for a problem, you will create them, which is why I and I think all of the other proponents of the leaf blower article are opposed to this amendment that doesn't seem to explain what it's fixing if there's no problem. It's hard to understand why the petitioner is seeking to amend the current bylaw. The petitioner has offered, traditionally, when there's a warrant article, there's an introductory paragraph explaining the purpose for it. There's no such purpose. There's been no discussion by the petitioner with any of the advocates of the leaf blower ordinance, asking, "Is there a problem we need to address?" or informing us that the petitioner believes there's a problem needed to address. But so it was a bit of a task to try and determine what the problem was and whether this proposed warrant article addresses or fixes the problem. There appear to be -- this article appears to be doing three things. The first is to limit the definition of a leaf blower. It struck me that perhaps we were not as clear as we might have been in the original article, because the notion of a portable leaf blower seems a bit redundant. Leaf blowers are things that, for the most part, landscape companies bring to the customers' property. So they are all, by definition -- could I have the slide? There is a slide.
Yeah, could we have the slide, please? Yeah, just ask Mr. Van Der Zee in the booth back there.
Yes, this is Mr. Richmond's slide that -- yeah. Leaf blowers, by definition, are portable, and this proposed definition would narrow what is a leaf blower to handheld leaf blowers, which I suspect are less egregious than these things. I don't think it's the intent of the definition to narrow leaf blowers to exclude these loud The second thing that I'm able to determine that is changed in the proposed warrant article is to add the European Union measurement of a decibel meter, ostensibly so that we can have more flexibility to buy dB meters that are manufactured in the European Union. I tried to do some homework on this online and found that in the European Union, decibels are measured -- this is like yards and meters. So that the decibel -- a European Union decibel meter would read by a different standard. For the most part, that you're able to determine, if you go online, that they're kind of comparable, but "kind of" is not a great word. And again, I wonder whether this will lead to more effective measurement or less effective measurement. But again, I wonder, what's the need for this?
You have one minute to wonder, Mr. Fisher.
As we learned yesterday, or Tuesday night, when I asked Chief O'Leary, there's no problem getting dB meters. American manufacturers make them, and there's no shortage. So that's another issue that's not an issue. The third issue, which I think Mr. Vitolo will address, I'll try and just raise it quickly, is the question of measuring sound at night as 10 dB less than sound during the day. Well, that's fine if you're in Lars Anderson Park, but it's very different if you live in Coolidge Corner, in Washington Square, in Precinct 2, where partying BU students can be only 10 decibels less than the T and the normal traffic at 10 o'clock at night at 3:00 in the morning. The difference between 10 decibels less than the normal noise level of Coolidge Corner or along Commonwealth Avenue is very different than 10 decibels less at night in Lars Anderson.
Please conclude.
Thank you.
Please conclude. Thank you very much.
I would urge that we vote no action on this.
Thank you, Ms. DeWitt.
I'm Betsy DeWitt, speaking for the Board of Selectmen. And I have to say, clearly, where there is a clarification needed, it's over the definition of the word "portable," which I read and understood to mean capable of being transported or conveyed, and apparently, there are, according to the proposed amended language, by hand, which is not the standard definition of portable. Speaking, however, to the overall bylaw, the Board of Selectmen recognizes these are technical updates. They incorporate State Building Code, current State Building Code, and they allow additional types of noise-measuring devices. However, in seeking to amend the definition of leaf blower, using the words "carried by hand or configured as a backpack," would definitely change the nature of the enforcement for the noise bylaw, would limit it, and I don't know if that picture is gone now, but we do disagree about the definition because we believe there are a variety of many other portable versions. I found 21 walk-behind leaf blowers, and there are also even larger pieces of equipment, also portable, by the way, that could include a combination of vacuum, chopper, shredder, and leaf blower. They can be either towed or pushed. All of these are much larger pieces of equipment and have much larger and louder engines. The change in definition would specifically open a loophole that would benefit certain operators, who we have been told can terrorize a whole neighborhood for hours when they have multiple clients who are physically on sites nearby. Therefore, the unanimous Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action on our amended, or I should say unamended, version of the warrant article without the definition expanded to say "carried by hand or configured as a backpack." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilman. And Dr. Vitolo, would you come forward, please?
Jane Gilman, Precinct 3. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen, Advisory Committee, and colleagues. This warrant article -- excuse me, I'm speaking on behalf of the Green Caucus. This warrant article purports to amend the Noise Control Bylaw, particularly with respect to leaf blowers. It would change the definition of items subject to the bylaw, adding European standards to existing American standards for measuring acceptable noise levels, and it would add a new background noise level for evenings. The Green Caucus believes that these changes will have little or no positive effect and are very likely to unduly complicate enforcement of the Noise Control Bylaw, particularly with respect to leaf blowers. There were two salient considerations when the matter of leaf blowers last came before Town Meeting. At that time, the caucus was concerned about greenhouse gas emissions from leaf blower machines, and we also sought to improve our quality of life by suppressing excessive noise. Today, we repeat our objection to avoidable noise. Noise is noise, regardless of where or how it is generated, so the matter of whether a noisy machine is carried, towed, pushed, or pulled is irrelevant. We need to continue to monitor machines and motors that contribute to the accumulation of greenhouse gases and seek to eliminate anything that adds more air pollutants. Some people, you may be aware, refer to leaf blowers as dust blowers. According to the Brookline Foundation report, some 76 percent of us live in housing units clustered in multifamily dwellings. This means they are in what's known as hardscape, that is, cement walls, brick walls, asphalt, stucco, and granite curbing, all of which reflect and magnify noise. Those of us who live in single-family homes surrounded by grass and trees may not appreciate how the noise emitted by leaf blowers ricochets off these surfaces. With respect to air pollutants, leaf blower emissions contribute to climate change at a time when we seek to reduce our climate damage and our carbon footprint. The Green Caucus voted unanimously no action on warrant Article 12.
Thank you, Dr. Vitolo.
And we can start the presentation, please. Next slide, please. My name is Tommy Vitolo. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 6, and I'm going to talk about nighttime noise. Next slide, please. It's a racket. It's a little funny. Next slide, please. You remember from November 2008, Brookline Bob and Larry the Leaf Blower? We talked about decibel math then. We're going to do a recap in just a minute. Next slide, please. First, I want to talk about noise pollution. This is in the existing bylaw. If a noise source increases noise levels 10 decibels or more above the background noise level, it shall be judged that a condition of noise pollution exists. And if you are creating this noise above and beyond ambient noise levels, you may well find yourself with a ticket. But to understand whether or not you get the ticket, you have to know what ambient noise is. So we'll go to the next slide, and we will learn that ambient or background noise level is the term used to describe the noise measured in the absence of the offending noise. Not a surprise, right? So ambient noise is what we hear when we're not shouting into the microphone like I'm doing now. Nevertheless, this bylaw proposes to change the definition of ambient noise at night. So instead of ambient noise at night being how loud it is at night, it will be defined to be 10 decibels lower than how loud it is ambient during the day. Next slide, please. So this will create a problem in the following sense. Let's say you're sleepless in North Brookline, and it's 11 o'clock at night on a Friday. You're sleepless because BU's in session, and you call the police, and you say, "Those kids are so loud, and I'm trying to get some sleep." And you're right to make that phone call. And the police come out with their sound pressure level meter, and they take a reading, and they get a number. And then they say, "Well, it's only noise pollution if it's 10 decibels louder than ambient noise," which, according to our bylaw, is measured during the day. So I'm going to come back tomorrow, measure the ambient noise level during the day, subtract 10, and that will be the ambient noise level at night, by which I will compare the reading now. This doesn't make any sense. If you want to know the ambient noise level at night, this thing works at night. Just take the temperature, take the measurement at night. We don't need to define it during the day, and here's why. This is a photo from --
Could you relax a little?
I get so excited.[1729.35][1729.35](Laughter). I've had a couple of cups of coffee.[1732.57][1732.57](Laughter). I had a late night last night, and you'll see why. This is Aspen Wall Hill during the daytime. In fact, in 2008, you'll see it was 43.3 decibels ambient noise. Next slide. Last night, at 11:30 at night, it was 42.4 decibels in the exact same location. It's a little tough to see in here, but I promise you. I had a lot of coffee. I'm tired. Next slide, please. Brookline Village, 2008, during the day, it's about 62, 63 decibels. At night, last night, at about 11:35 PM. Next slide, it was 44 decibels. So let's do some decibel math on the next slide. Forty-three minus 10 equals 42, right? Next slide. Wrong. Next slide. 62.8 minus 10 equals 44, right? Wrong. Next slide. So what have we learned? We've learned two things. Number one, ambient noise at night is not necessarily 10 decibels quieter than ambient noise during the day. On the contrary, sometimes the difference is much On the contrary, sometimes the difference is much less than ten decibels, and sometimes it's much more than ten decibels. The other thing we've learned is that the most sensible way to measure ambient noise at night is just to measure ambient noise at night, not to come back the next day, take a measurement, and then do decibel math. Next slide, please. Why does this matter? This is just one example that shows-
You have one, one minute, sir.
That shows that this warrant article is bad news. The Board of Selectmen discovered that this article undermined the portable leaf blower restriction, and have tried to remedy that problem. Chief O'Leary pointed out two nights ago that he's had no problem procuring American Standard meters, obviating the need for any change to allow European or international-approved meters. And I've pointed out that legislating nighttime ambient noise is a bit like legislating that the earth is flat. The laws of physics trump the bylaws of Brookline. Next slide, please.
You have thirty seconds.
This article is a poor solution to a non-existent problem that undermines a recently improved noise ordinance bylaw. There may be some changes that have merit, but there are enough that in fact make things worse. I urge that we vote no action on the main motion, and if the electrical generators is a real problem, let's bring just that back in the fall and fix that problem without creating these other problems. No action on the main motion, please.
Mr. Moderator.
Dr. Friedman.
Hi, Frank Friedman, Precinct Eight. Um, I, I'm somewhat perplexed by this as well, um, so I had a couple of observations and a question. Um, first observation, looking at the maximum noise level for motorcycles where it says seventy-nine regardless of the speed, um, I looked at, uh, the AAA site lists the maximum noise that motorcycles can produce state by state at a mass-
But, Dr. Friedman, uh, we're not doing anything with that section of the bylaw.
Well, I'm just perplexed by the fact that we have a-
Well, I, I know, but the, that part of the bylaw is not before us, sir.
Okay. Um, all right, then I may, uh, so I guess, the, the main question I had then was, um, if some, I was hoping someone could inform me how this changes the existing, uh, noise bylaw for the state, for the, uh, for the community, other than the leaf blower and nighttime, uh, generators if at all. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Jonas tried to explain that, uh... Do you want to try again, Ms. Jonas? I guess not.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Fine.
Uh, Jonathan Fine, Precinct Thirteen. I just have a question. On all these definitions of leaf blower, does this apply only to gas-powered leaf blowers? Are electric leaf blowers still excluded? It's not clear from, from anything that's written here.
I think it applies to all leaf blowers, does it not?
Well, I thought electric leaf blowers were excluded on the existing bylaw. Am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong.
Pardon me?
I think you're correct. I remember the original discussion explicitly, in order to pass it, to begin with excluded electric blowers that a small homeowner would have to carry and attach to a, a cord. So this new language, that was going to be my question, it seems to open it up to any and all. I feel like that's the kind of change that shouldn't happen when you get the original one based on one scenario.
Thank you, I, I think you've had your moment in the sun for the time being, Mr. Margolis.
Call a question?
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor of calling the, uh, I'm sorry, I have, uh, I have Mr. Richmond on the list, and, uh, Mr. Margolis I had on the list to speak, and he has spoken. So, all those in favor of calling the question, please raise your hands. Those opposed, make, uh, the question is called by a two-thirds vote. First, on the Selectmen's Amendment to delete the language that the Advisory Committee would have added to paragraph M on the bottom of page twelve dash twenty-five. Those in favor of the Selectmen's Amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carries on the main motion as so amended. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Not even the Advisory Committee? Have, have we, have we no courage in front of the auditorium? For those opposed, please raise your hands. The motion is defeated unanimously. I think, I think that's a first for town meeting. We now turn to Articles thirteen and fourteen, and we'll debate them both together. Both apply, uh, have to do with tobacco control. The first, under Article thirteen, the, um, motion is found on page thirteen dash five. It's moved by Ms. Humphrey and seconded by Ms. DeWitt that the town amended the, uh, bylaws in Section eight point two-three and, and, uh, as indicated on page thirteen dash six. Motion under Article fourteen is found on page fourteen dash three, that the town, again, amend, uh, the tobacco control bylaw by increasing the age of a definition of minor is set forth in the bylaw from nineteen to twenty-one. Those are both moved by Ms. Humphrey, seconded by Ms. DeWitt. Please remind the speakers that, uh, while you have five minutes, you need to address both Article thirteen and fourteen. Mr. Berman.
Hello, my name is Nathan Burmel. I'm a senior at Brookline High School here, and I'm also a peer leader. Um, before Brookline High School, I attended the Heath School. Um, both Article thirteen and Article fourteen work to address the issue of tobacco use among, um, among students and youth in Brookline. Article thirteen proposes a four-hundred-foot no-smoke zone extending from the property of Brookline High School. Um, there's a map in, um, in the packet there, and it'll extend past the field, past Cypress Street, um, as well as two streets behind the high school, as well as, um, numerous streets to the side. Um, this no-smoke zone would apply to minors and school personnel. So to start off with some statistics from Brookline High School, currently, six percent of freshmen, eleven percent of sophomores, thirteen percent of juniors, and seventeen percent of seniors have smoked recently, um, around ten to thirteen percent cumulative. And forty percent of those smokers have said that they have tried to quit in the past or would be open to quitting. Um, Newton North, Newton North in two thousand eight implemented a similar boundary. Um, their boundary was, was nine hundred foot, uh, feet, so it was larger than ours, um, but it was extremely effective. In terms of the senior smokers, uh, that's where we have the statistics from, um, for girls, it went, um, from thirteen point one percent down to four point seven percent. And for boys, it went from thirteen percent to six percent, and this is just since two thousand eight. We believe that this, no-smoke zone would be very important in terms of the perception of the school. Currently, um, right across the street from the high school at Greeno Street is, um, an area that is public property where students are allowed to smoke on, and they do smoke on it. They smoke on it every day, all day, before school, during school, during class, during lunches, and after school. Um, so it's really not the best image for the school to have students out there smoking every single day. These smokers also produce a significant amount of secondhand smoke for the hundreds of students that congregate on Greeno Street after school each day, for people commuting through the area, and also for the, um, Brookline Early Education Program preschool that is located in Brookline High School. This preschool class walks on the sidewalk, um, right next to the benches twice a day, so they're exposed to the secondhand smoke as well. Um, and, um, we believe that this is very important in terms of the access that, um, students have to tobacco, particularly freshmen. Um, currently, anyone can just walk out and, um, you know, purchase cigarettes from another student. And so by removing this kind of congregation area and dispersing it, you're going to have students, um, with finding it harder to, um, find cigarettes, and they're also going to be, um, not as much interested in smoking because there will not be a social aspect to it. There won't be this congregation area that is accepting the students, and it won't be seen as cool among, um, certain students, so you're removing that as well. For this article, the signage, um, will be taken care of. It will not, um, be something that will be over the top in any way. For Newton North, they only had, uh, a total of four signs, um, that were attached to telephone poles, so they're non-intrusive and, um, definitely very minimal. The enforcement of this law would, um, fall to two plainclothes officers who currently work for the security of the high school. This would just be expend, um, extending their current duties of enforcing the no-smoking policy on the public, on, um, the high school's property, would be expanding it just four-hundred feet. So this distance and, and the designation for security has all been the result of, um, a year and a half of meetings among school faculty, and every single school faculty member, um, barring one, um, was fully in support of Article thirteen. So Article fourteen works in tandem with Article thirteen. Um, it works for the same goal, and it raises the minimum purchasing age for tobacco up to twenty-one. It does this by changing the definition of minor in Article eight point two-three, um, and this definition of minor is, um, used in Article thirteen. So it would mean that for Article thirteen, um, it would apply to minors under twenty-one and school personnel. So, um, almost all high school students do not reach the age of twenty-one while in high school, so this article will hopefully, um, so this article would virtually eliminate legal access to tobacco products directly to students. Um, and so, um, additionally, the vast majority of, um, adults who are distributing to students are between the ages of eighteen to twenty-one. Um, these are older siblings, college students, um, and, you know, older high school students, and so that's just where the distribution happens, and so by eliminating, um, that segment, you're going to be, um, significantly decreasing the access that students have. Younger people are significantly more prone to addiction. This is because the brain is not fully developed until twenty-five, so it's very important to make sure that, um, young people do not become addicted at this early age where they're susceptible, um, and, um, their brains are, you know, still developing intellectually. There were a few concerns from vendors, but, um, you know, the portion of, um, consumers between the ages of eighteen to twenty-one is really, um, almost a negligible amount in terms of their, um, in terms of the total people, amount of people who are purchasing tobacco products. This warrant article, Article thirteen, would also address other tobacco products, so not just cigarettes. It would, um, include dip and chewing tobacco, which is a significant problem at the high school. Around five percent of the student body dips, um, and it's not, not very much overlap between the smokers, so, um, um, this would kind of, you know, address both of those problems at once together. So, um, the students are in strong support of this, um, the faculty are in, are in strong support of this, and I definitely believe that both of these articles, especially together, will work to get, will, um, you know, have, uh, very dramatic public health impacts. We've seen that they have with, with Newton and with other towns that are implementing, um, the purchasing age up to twenty-one. You know, Brookline's been traditionally a leader in public health initiatives with smoke-free workplaces, restaurants, and bars, um, ticketing for sales of tobacco to minors, smoke-free housing, styrofoam container and plastic bag bans, so this would be continuing Brookline's place as a leader in public health. So, thank you.
Sitska Humphrey, Precinct Six, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. Uh, in the interest of not repeating anything that has been said, I want to thank Nathan for pretty much saying a lot of the things that we were going to say as well. Uh, Articles thirteen and fourteen promote, um, tobacco control for our youth. Article thirteen establishes a safe four-hundred-feet no-smoking zone around the high school, and Article fourteen, as Nathan mentioned too, uh, it would increase the minimum age for purch- purchasing tobacco to twenty-one years. Uh, the Advisory Committee did amend Section eight twenty-three point three, uh, by adding, um, the word no minor or school personnel, and the Advisory Committee voted favorable action on that amended article by, um, on Article thirteen with a fourteen-four-two vote, and voted favorable action on the vote offered by the Selectmen on, um, Article fourteen with a sixteen-two-three vote. And in addition, the Advisory Committee commends the peer leaders, um, of the high school for their efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen, Dr. Cohen.
Bruce Cohen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Twelve. I'm also here as the Chair of the Public Health Advisory Council. Um, we held public hearings on both Articles thirteen and fourteen and voted unanimously to support the passage of both. Uh, we feel each makes a significant contribution to limiting tobacco access to youth, and both articles substantially increase the comprehensive nature of our tobacco control efforts here in town. The comprehensive strategy includes, um, not, um, the, the no-smoking zone and, um, the restrictions on age complement the education, the prevention, the compliance checks, and the treat, uh, treatment strategies that we're developing to attack tobacco in a really, um, complete fashion. So we urge support for both Articles thirteen and fourteen.
Mr. Witt, would you like to add anything?
On the question.
Mr. Witt, and then we'll take a question from Mr. Satan.
I don't think this is, uh, all right, Betsy DeWitt for the Board of Selectmen, we're all in agreement. Um, the one, uh, point that we felt obliged to mention is that once we vote changing the age for purchasing tobacco, we will also have changed the definition of minor, and that means that, um, in Article thirteen, individuals who are minors will be twenty-one years old, and to the extent that the Advisory Committee foresaw some enforcement problems outside of school hours, and changed the language to say, um, minors and school personnel, minors in that case outside of school hours will be twenty-one-year-old individuals who might be walking their dogs in the evening. And that's just simply be, be aware of what you're voting for. Otherwise, the Board of Selectmen is, uh, in strong support of both Articles thirteen and fourteen, and commends the students for the research that they did in bringing these forward.
Thank you, Mr. Safer.
Josh Safer, Precinct Sixteen. Just a quick question, maybe it's my failure to understand the terminology, but there's been confusion as to whether these rules apply to e-cigarettes, and so I'm wondering if that's the case, and if there's anything-
I don't believe they do. Is that correct? The, they're not covered. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Goldsmith, Precinct Eleven, and, um, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. I was, um, asked to speak tonight by my fifteen-year-old. That doesn't happen so often, so I'm compelled to speak. Um, I want to tell you when he started as a freshman this year, night after night, he came home perplexed by the smoking benches. You know, the entry to the school being defined by kids smoking, and was that okay? It was dinner conversation repeatedly, and we talked a lot about, um, you know, civil liberties versus public health impact, and how, like many people in this room, I grew up in a time when people didn't wear seatbelts and people smoked everywhere, and miraculously times change, and people change, and behaviors change. And, um, I, so I want to thank you for both bringing this forward because it's an important public health measure, but it's also a really important conversation for kid, for the students at the school, and showing that the actions of a few kids can really make change and tip opinions. Um, I think it's just a really important and powerful thing, and, um, you know, as far as the second proposal, we got into this, again, I feel like the taxi medallion economist could answer this, you know, if you change purchasing in one place, is that like squeezing a balloon? Do you just increase it somewhere else, or are you really changing something? It feels a little weird to change the definition of a minor by town, but on the other hand, we changed rules about seatbelts, and miraculously people wear them. So I just want to thank you, and speaking on behalf of a freshman and myself, um, in favor of this.
Now, is there anyone standing at a microphone who has a question, as opposed to, uh, support, uh, the expression of support for these? Okay, go ahead.
Um, hi, I'm Rachel Sandalo Ash, I'm from Precinct Ten. Um, and-
Hi, I'm Rachel Sandalo Ash. I'm from Precinct 10, and I'm wondering, what's the, for Article 14, what's the penalty for violation of this rule? What happens if somebody who is under 21 buys cigarettes, and does that penalty fall on the vendor or on the buyer?
Dr. Balsam?
Ellen Balsam, Public Health and Human Services. The penalty falls on the vendor.
Okay.
Thank you. And what is the penalty, Dr. Balsam?
It can range up to a couple of hundred dollars depending on how often they sell.
Can I-
In fact, continuous sale could lead to the pulling of their permit.
May I make a comment as well?
Why don't you let us hear some questions?
Okay, it's just a word of caution.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. Article 13 makes sense to me because restrictions on smoking in public places and school properties, I think that there's a pretty strong precedent for that. Article 14, changing the definition of a minor in the town of Brookline, makes me kind of nervous. I'm 20-years-old. I'm the youngest Town Meeting Member here, and I don't really- (applause) And I don't really like the idea of a minor being defined as anybody under 21. I think that the United States changed the definition of a minor back after the Vietnam War, when it was decided that if you could fight and go to the Army and die, you could also vote and do all of those things. And I'm slightly concerned by the precedent that this would establish about young people in the town of Brookline. Thank you.
Well, you under, you understand, ma'am, that this definition only applies to tobacco enforcement?
Right, and we see how it's also used for alcohol, and I don't think that works. I go to college. That doesn't work. (laughter)
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ian Palumbom, Precinct 6, your host precinct for Town Meeting. Welcome, everybody. The home of Brookline High School. We have the place surrounded, and in that capacity, we would also be the home to the 400-foot buffer zone. And so I have a question about the implementation, specifically what kind of signage is planned. If you worked in criminal justice at all, like I have, you're familiar with, for instance, the drug-free school zones, enhanced penalties for, now it's within 300 feet of a school. It's reasonable to assume that if somebody's carrying a large amount of cocaine for sale, and they get to an entering the school zone sign, they're not going to take their wares and throw them on the ground or into somebody's yard. The same would not be said, however, for somebody smoking a cigarette on their way to their workplace as a teacher or staff member, or on their way to the high school as a student. And so my question is, what kind of signage or perhaps other measures having to do with the resulting trash might be contemplated by public works or anyone else involved? And I assure you, Mr. Moderator, I am not only asking this question because I live about 375 feet from here. There are other people similarly situated who have questions like that.
Dr. Balsam, can you tell us?
There will be limited signage. As was mentioned, there are four signs in Newton North, and it does seem to do the trick. There's no question that we're pushing the barrier out, and, but there's not going to be a zealous kind of enforcement of this thing with the two security people going around measuring where the 400 feet is. I think it's reasonable to assume the main thrust here is to get these students who smoke out from in front of the school, and to push them back far enough so that they can't take their five-minute break between classes, run out to that area adjacent to the school, and light up. They'd have to go out 400 feet-
The question had to do with signage.
We don't know exactly how many signs. I'll, I'll work on that with the head of DPW.
Well, are they contemplated looking at the outside for people coming in, or at the school, letting them know how far away they'd have to go?
I don't know.
Thank you.
Ms. Kaplan?
Ruth Kaplan, Precinct 13. Just a couple of questions. I also want to commend the students. One, does this bylaw also apply to in-school smoking?
Well, I don't believe you can smoke in, within the high school.
No, no, but I mean, I, I think part of the reason that, that smoking was allowed in the first place outside the school was there was an acknowledgement that there might, that some kids were smoking in the school, so they kind of allowed them to smoke outside the school. So I just wondered, what happens if you're caught smoking in school?
Ms. Murphy?
General Laws, Jocelyn Murphy, Town Council. General Laws, Chapter 270, Section 22, I believe, prohibits smoking in schools. It's state law.
Are there penalties involved with that?
I'm not aware of the penalty, but it's a state law, and certainly it's something that the high school staff is well aware of.
My second question is, in terms of, I'm, I'm a little unclear about what the penalty is. When it says, it says a first violation of this section, and for any subsequent violation, the violator may be afforded the option of enrolling in a smoking cessation program. And then it says something that says that if you've completed that, that's in lieu of fines set forth in this section, and in Section 10.3 of these bylaws. I'm, I might not be reading this right, but I don't know where that section is or what those fines are.
Is that the penalty section of the bylaws? Yes, Mr. Vermel?
So the, the main goal of this isn't really to punish people who are violating this. It's to provide options for, you know, to really provide options for cessation. So if you're found in violation, you're going to be offered to these cessation classes that are already in place through the social workers and, you know, through, through the school is already in place. So you're going to be, if you're found in violation, you're going to be recommended to this, and if you don't attend the classes, then you'll be offered fines.
But I, I don't see where the fines-
The question is, what's the penalty?
I don't see it.
What is, what's the fine? And Town Council, well, Town Council looks up the answer to that question?
So the current fine, Jocelyn Murphy, Town Council, the fine, the violation and penalty section can be found in Section 8.2, 3.6 of the town's general bylaws, which provides, there are several parts to it. Person who violates any provision of this bylaw or smokes in any area in which a smoking prohibited by law sign is posted and so forth is, shall be punished by a fine of not more than $50 for each offense, and then it goes on increasing to $100 and $300. But as Mr. Vermel has pointed out, one of the points of this, this article is to provide for an alternative penalty for first offenders and even subsequent offenders if it's appropriate.
So just one, one follow-up on that. I assume, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm assuming that, that smoking cessation class doesn't apply to school personnel, right? They would just be fined?
It would. It would apply, and frankly, I feel constrained to perhaps correct something that Dr. Balsam said, and I believe that the provision in this article would apply even to vendors.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, do they get to, do they enroll in a class, or they just get fined, adults?
No, no, any violator, as the language says, any violator would be entitled to the smoking, well, would be entitled to consideration for the smoking cessation program in lieu of the fine.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jonas?
Alyssa Jonas, Precinct 16. I want to follow up on what Rachel, I'm sorry, Rachel, I didn't catch her last name, was saying. She just went through college. I have two daughters that both just went through high school, went through college, and they had absolutely no problem getting alcohol, even though you couldn't get it till post-21. I've always been concerned that it's the forbidden fruit that does that. So what I'm concerned about is whether raising the age to 21 could actually have an opposite effect, and I know during the Advisory Committee meeting, Needham was discussed, and that it was very effective to prohibit purchases up to age 21, and I'm just wondering, has there been a broader study of other municipalities to see whether, what happens, or was Needham the only?
Dr. Cohen?
The studies, Bruce Cohen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12. There haven't been a lot of studies since this is relatively new, but none of the research that I've seen has had this forbidden fruit effect. We haven't seen an increase in smoking in this age group. Here, in, in Brookline, it would only be two years, 19-year-olds and 20-year-olds, so it's difficult to, to think that there would be a dramatic increase in smoking prevalence. So also very difficult, at the time we're doing this, there's a general decline because of the other strategies in smoking among youth of this age, so there are a variety of effects, and it's difficult to isolate the specific effect of, of the, these particular actions.
Mr. Richmond?
Clint Richmond, Precinct 6. Like my colleague, Mr. Palumbom, I have some concerns about the wording choice here in the Advisory Committee's amendment. I don't know why it doesn't say "students" instead of "minors," so it applies to the general public. I mean, can I, can we make a motion to that effect? Is anybody interested in that?
Well, we're, we're not going to do any wordsmithing on the floor of Town Meeting, Mr. Richmond. I'm sorry. If you had a concern, you could have expressed it beforehand, and it could have been published or put in the form of an amendment. We're not going to wordsmith the statute.
And also, I, I would agree with Ms. Jonas that raising the age to 21 does seem to set up some sort of hypocrisy about being able to buy in one jurisdiction and not another. And it's not clear that raising it to 19 has, has had a significant effect by itself, so I don't know why raising it to 21, which doesn't apply to high school students, will have any significant health effect despite its symbolic value.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You've been very patient.
Richard Nguyen, Precinct 2. I hate smoking, Mr. Moderator, and I will vote for Article 14, but I will vote against Article 13. One of the attractions of Brookline High School is the environment of tolerance, and one of the growing problems in our society is lack of tolerance, and rules that try and determine what people do all the time can eventually be counterproductive. And taking a group of students, often maybe particular socio-economic groups of students, and forcing them, if they want to practice this habit, to be a long way away from the school, makes them unavailable for persuasion and for argument about what they're doing. And I, and I really feel like this is a step too far, and it has the appearance of achieving a result, but may not have the desired result. So I would urge Town Meeting to vote against Article 13.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Kate Solbaugh, Precinct 1. I just wanted to speak to the 18 versus 21 age that was raised earlier by our 20-year-old Town Meeting Member. There is precedent, obviously, for regulating controlled substances to 21, because we do it for alcohol, and so I think, though, the citizenship rights and the health regulations are on different paths. I'm sympathetic with the youth rights concerns, but I think if you can regulate alcohol, you certainly should be able to regulate tobacco, since tobacco doesn't have any virtues, which alcohol may have some. And then I also wanted to say that I don't know, with respect to joining the service, I don't know how many Brookline kids do join the service, but I know that Nathan Vermel, who has proposed this warrant, is joining the service next year by going to the Naval Academy in Annapolis.
Thank you, Mr. Swartz.
Chuck Swartz, Precinct 9. I just want to know if I could respond to Mr. Nguyen's comments?
Certainly.
I can appreciate his concern for giving students some space here, but as a teacher, not here in Brookline, but as a teacher, I know what it's like to have, have to walk through a cloud of smoke to get into the building, and not only am I concerned about myself, but I'm concerned about other students who are nonsmokers having to do the same.
Thank you. On the, first, the motion under Article 13, on page 13-5 at the bottom. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, raise your hands. Those opposed, anyone over here? Well, you're in a minority, sir. 208 to 1 in favor. On the motion under Article 14, on page 14-3, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, raise your hands. Motion carries by a majority vote. Now, we now come to Articles 15 through 19, and by a vote taken at the first session of Town Meeting, we agreed that these articles, all of which concern the B2 parcel, would be taken up first thing at the third session, which will occur on Monday. So we turn to Article 20, and I'm pleased to report that there is no motion being offered under Article 20. So we proceed to Article 21. Motion under Article 21 is on page 21-7, that the town amend the zoning bylaw by adding a new zoning district S4. Actually, the amendment is on, on page 21-8 in the table. There's no amendment of the text. Moved by Ms. DeWitt, seconded by Ms. Hardabek. I call on Diane Gold, petitioner. Give him the microphone, ma'am.
Thank you very much for inviting me to present warrant to Article 21 on behalf of neighbors from Buttonwood Village. And some of my neighbors are in the back there waving.
Yeah, let's, let's tell us who you are and where you live.
I'm sorry, I'm Diane Gold. I live at 1 Forest Street, Button Village. Our goal is to have zoning that fits our neighborhood. After World War II, our neighborhood was built from the marshes at the bottom of what was then the Lars Anderson Estate, to create affordable, modest, single-family housing for the civil servants of Brookline, firefighters, traffic wardens, and town police. These were the folks who wore the brass buttons after which our neighborhood is named. We bought our house at 1 Forest Street from Sergeant Burke. My next-door neighbor, George Sala, who signed and spoken for the warrant, is a retired firefighter. Brookline Police continue to live in our neighborhood. Buttonwood Village has remained mainly a single-family neighborhood. For some unknown reason, while there is single-family home zoning in most areas of our neighborhood, our corner Forest Street homes and a number of modest, single-family homes on Meadowbrook and adjoining streets were zoned inappropriately T5. Developers have exploited that zoning. Mr. and Mrs. Murphy lived in this little cottage house on Meadowbrook Street, next to George Sala and two doors from us. John Murphy went to the one-room schoolhouse when it was at the foot of Allendale Farm. When Mr. Murphy died and Mrs. Murphy was too ill to live there, the Murphy lot was sold to a developer who subdivided it and built two huge, four-story, two-family luxury condos. The developer pushed the limits in every direction, going as high up and as far out as he could with back porches and stairs and building as close to the neighbors and the property borders as possible. Green space was paved over to create 10 parking spaces as required by the town for two two-family condos. The result is more traffic, streets that are less safe, less green space, more outdoor heat in the summer, poorer drainage, and loss of a modest home. We were told they can do this by right. If you don't like it, change the zoning. As our lots were mostly 4,000 to 5,000 square feet, and there was no zone that would fit our dimensions, with the guidance of the Planning Board and Poli Selco, 11 contiguous neighbors agreed to propose to create a new S4 zone which would fit our situation. Zoning ourselves is what we were, single-family homes without changing anything else. As neighbors, we came together to take this step in solving a problem that threatens the character of our neighborhood. Some neighbors wanted to go further, but consensus and respect for each of our neighbors was important. By rezoning to a single-family home, we will protect current overall residential density. Two-family building doubles the need for back porches, entrances, exits, and stairs that reduce green space and push up against neighborhood lot, neighboring lots. Single-family zoning is likely to maintain building with larger setbacks and more pri- Single-family zoning is likely to maintain building with larger setbacks and more privacy for neighbors. By rezoning, we will maintain green space by more than having the required parking area for cars. In a neighborhood without much access to public transport, we will reduce the number of cars and the amount of traffic in our narrow streets, where neighbors of all ages meet to walk, play, and support each other. Everyone whose home and lot is listed in warrant Article 21 has agreed to it. The article was approved by the Planning Board, by the Board of Selectmen, and by the Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeWitt.
Betsy DeWitt, speaking for the Board of Selectmen. It's a petitioned article in many ways similar to Article 11, which created the Toxteth Neighborhood Conservation District, in the case where a group of residents have come together to address impacts on their neighborhood, and interestingly, a different solution. In the case of Buttonwood Village, the proposed solution is to create a new S4 zoning district that would cover 11 properties that are, the S-zone district would more closely describe the characteristics that the neighborhood wants to maintain. The area was developed in the 1950s and has houses of similar scale and character. Currently, the zoning of T5 generally allows a single-family dwelling or one two-family dwelling, either in a single building or as a pair of attached townhouses. However, it is a neighborhood of single-family homes, typically on a smaller lot. The triggering event for this proposal was the purchase of a single-family home on a larger lot that allowed the developer to demolish the house, subdivide the lot, and construct two large, two-family houses, for a total of four new dwellings where there had been one, and 10 additional parking spaces that were required on the site. The proposed new S4 zoning district will permit single-family homes on a 4,000-square-foot lot, and larger, single-family homes will be possible. However, the neighbors have agreed that it is acceptable because there will be more open space, fewer driveways, and cars, and less traffic. The Board of Selectmen supports this amendment to the zoning bylaw, as does the Advisory Committee and the Planning Board, and we also commend the neighborhood for its thoughtful process in reaching consensus on a different solution that will protect this neighborhood. The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend favorable action on the vote on Article 23 on page 21-7 of the combined reports.
Mr. Hyken and Ms. Cirillo, I'm sorry, Ms. Hardabek, would you come forward? Have a seat.
Steve Hyken, representing the Planning Board. The Button Village neighbors did come to the Planning Board with a creative solution, agreeing collectively to downzone their set of properties from an existing zoning that was two-family, and agreed to limit future development to single-family homes on those lots, and we commend them for doing that. We do raise the caution going forward that since they, in creating this new S4 district, retained the zoning characteristics of the previous T district, particularly the FAR of 1.0, as you saw earlier, on a fairly large lot such as existed on Toxteth Street, a quite large, even, single-family dwelling could be built on those lots. So we feel that's a concern for the future. But as far as what has been proposed tonight, the Planning Board does agree with the others that we unanimously support favorable action on this article.
Kelly Hardabek, town meeting member from Precinct 7. Tonight, I'm speaking for the Advisory Committee on Article 21. I think you've heard pretty much just about everything that needs to be said about this. Article 21 seeks to create a new zoning designation for single-family homes and to downzone 11 properties within that neighborhood with the new designation. As you saw, this is a neighborhood of mostly single-family homes on 4,000 to 5,000 square-foot lots. The new zoning designation basically takes the table of dimensional requirements for T5 and only changes the allowed use. So as mentioned, it does retain the FAR of 1, which would allow for a large, single-family home, but it really, what it does is it helps to preserve the open space simply because of the parking requirements under two-family use. So although we did, as an advisory committee, although we did have concerns about the FAR of 1.0 and whether or not 11 properties gave critical mass to the zone, overall, we thought it was a great and creative solution to a problem similar to the one that the Toxteth Street area also had. And by a vote of 12, 2, 2, 0, 12, 2, and 0, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action.
Thank you. Just a note to the speakers, if you find yourself saying, "As you've heard," or "I think that everything's been said about," it's a clue that you should perhaps edit your remarks. Mr. Lynn Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Shaun Lynn Jones from Precinct 1. If you liked Article 11, you'll love Article 21, and I hope you'll join me in voting favorable action. Thank you.
Mr. Steinfeld, do you wish to be heard? Okay, that exhausts the speaker list. On the motion on page 21-7, that requires a two-thirds vote, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Those opposed, please stand. Motion carries by a vote of 205 to 3. If there are seven town meeting members who doubt the count... Article 22. The motion under Article 22 is found on page 22-11 over to 22-13 relating to the table of use regulations, moved by Ms. Hyatt, seconded by Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you, Angela Hyatt for the Advisory Committee. Article 22 is submitted by the Department of Planning and Community Development to modernize how our zoning bylaw addresses gas stations. It does this by proposing two primary changes. First, it allows them to operate as a fully self-service entity, and second, it would allow them to have a convenience store associated with its use. Our current zoning bylaw has two gas station-related uses, the regular old gasoline service stations and a use called partially self-service gas stations, which was added in the early '90s. Since the partially self-service gas stations specifically allow only a portion of the pumps to be self-serve, that means that our current bylaw has no provisions for fully self-service stations in Brookline. So Article 22 would allow gas stations to operate as fully self-serve, fully full-serve, or a combination of the two. And it would do this by deleting the partially self-service gas station use and adding a new use called gasoline service station with convenience store. This would be allowed by special permit in all business districts except O, which is the office. I'm just going to explain these two changes briefly and separately because they are largely unrelated to each other. The self-service pump feature, when the gas stations were originally created in the bylaw, the concept of self-service pumps didn't exist. Removing the requirement to have at least one self-service pump would allow these businesses to respond to current market conditions, market demand. The pumps, self-service pumps, would have a call button at each pump for anyone that needs assistance, whether they're disabled or just want some additional help. The Advisory Committee noted that this goes beyond the minimum ADA requirements and agreed this would be a good feature for Brookline's population. And although self-service pumps have become the norm in most communities, customers that want full service are free to take their business to another establishment. Regarding the convenience stores, there are a few gas stations currently in town that have been grandfathered in to sell the occasional candy bar or soda, but new gas stations, when they're permitted in town under our current bylaw, are not permitted to sell non-automotive products. And this is, even though the convenience store aspect of many of these businesses is really a key factor to their economic viability. So one of the objectives of Article 22 is to address the concerns that some people may have with allowing a retail use associated with a gas station. So Article 22 proposes a 3,000-square-foot size limit to this portion of the building. Now, although reductions to the size limit are outside the scope of the article, some members of the Advisory Committee were concerned about the potential size of this convenience store feature, because 3,000 square feet is larger than many single-family homes, and it's kind of difficult to imagine a single-story, 30-foot-by-100-foot building being appropriate in most of our business districts. Regardless, the zoning language does not allow these convenience stores to have a drive-through window or any indoor seating, and parking requirements would be the same for other gas stations, although these could be reduced by special permit. So the Advisory Committee was a little bit perplexed and maybe even a little amused at the specific ban on the indoor seating. The implicit reason for this is to prevent these convenience stores from operating like a full restaurant, but most felt like this was not a likely outcome nor a real threat of stealing away customers from our fine eating establishments in town. In fact, the Advisory Committee noted that the Article 22, as originally submitted...
One minute.
Okay, I'm almost done. Would not prevent gas stations without a convenience store from having seating. It's only those with a convenience store that couldn't have indoor seating. And so for that reason, we proposed amended language. And then there's a requirement that the single business or franchise name would help maintain a single entity on the site and prevent a whole sort of other conditions requiring more parking. So by unanimous vote, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on Article 22 with the modifications shown starting on page 20 to 11 of the combined reports, noting that we added the phrase "except for gasoline service station purposes" to the "no indoor seating shall be allowed." And we removed the single franchise name requirement so that the clause reads, "The convenience store and gas station uses shall be operated as a single business."
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kane Goldstein for unanimous Board of Selectmen. I've been checking off Ms. Hyatt's comments, so I'm only going to say things she didn't say.
Excellent.
I had a cute comment, that convenience stores, as the name implies, are convenient, so we should do what's necessary to make our lives more convenient. This has become the norm. Ms. Hyatt didn't mention that the convenience stores will have to comply with parking requirements, but that the spaces, the pump spaces, don't count against those spaces, that there can be no branded other uses in the convenience stores, such as donut shops, I think you know who I might be talking about, and that also that provision is made for full service, service at the pumps for disabled persons. So I think that's an important provision, too. Favorable action is voted unanimously by the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyken.
I'll follow Mr. Goldstein's lead. Steve Hyken for the Planning Board. I think between Mr. Goldstein and Ms. Hyatt, all the relevant points have been made. The Planning Board also unanimously supports favorable action for this article.
Ms. Vanderkay, is it?
Yes, Judith Vanderkay, Precinct 9. About, maybe it was 20 years ago now, my neighborhood rallied to prevent a giant highway rest stop-type gas station from situating itself at the end of my street. What we got was not as quiet and unobtrusive as what we had before, but it could have been worse. But the things that we were concerned about were the additional traffic from the addition of a lot of self-service pumps, and our concern that our schoolchildren, as they were then, they're now far beyond that, anyway, that all the schoolchildren would have to walk past this tempting convenience store with its arrays of chips and junk food and soda and all the things that sort of store purvey. So I guess I have a big question, which is, why do we want to encourage gas stations with their pollution, their additional traffic, their potential harm to our young population and the things they sell that are not automotive? And I just, this is like something from Alec being proposed in the guise of an innocuous regulation, but is actually got some, I don't know, anyway, I'll stop at that. I would also wonder why we want to encourage more convenience stores that are not local. Most of the gas stations that I know of in Brookline have big mega-company names on them, and the profits from those, in part, I would think, Mr. Audi notwithstanding, would go back to the corporate headquarters that are far, far from Brookline. So I don't see really that there's a need for this article, and I would like to urge everyone to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Jonathan Davis, Precinct 10. I was going to talk about something else, and I think I will, but I would just like to mention here that I really don't see much point in increasing the outlets of availability for purchase of cigarettes, frankly, which is what this would do. The question that I do have, Mr. Moderator, is I wonder if somebody from law enforcement here could comment on the exposure of additional convenience stores at gas stations where people can drive up to, basically, holdups at night. Gasoline stations, just the gas pumps are typically paid for, gas is paid for typically, by credit cards. Convenience stores are typically paid for by cash, and I wonder if there's somebody, I wonder if the police department has looked at this and has any comment on the exposure of additional convenience stores late at night to drive-ups, hold-ups, and getaways?
Well, Mr. Davis, I'm afraid the only police officer in the auditorium is the duty officer, and he's not unlikely to be equipped to answer your question. Mr. Ms. Murphy or Mr. Klechner? Mr. Cronin? Mr. Goldstein?
Anybody been in prison?
I'm afraid you're out of luck, Mr. Davis. Perhaps you could call the chief offline. Mr. Rosenthal?
I'm Marty Rosenthal, former police commissioner, ex-officio, but I don't have the answer. I'm also Precinct 9. I have, I'm going to collapse two quick questions into one, and the first one is rhetorical anyway. The first one is that I recognize, I think I offered this, and it was deemed out of order, and I agree that it is, but as an amendment, but I do offer it as a rhetorical suggestion, which is that at some point, either the Health Department or somebody should look into requiring hand sanitizers at self-service gas stations. So, but moving to what I think is a yes or no answer, it may sound trivial to people, but town meeting actually passed something that I proposed a few, it's about... but town meeting actually passed something that I proposed a few, it's about 10 years ago, that self-service gas stations on their signage, as to their prices, should say "self-service," and I felt it was misleading not to. And I've been now through two building commissioners, and I haven't talked to the current one, and one town administrator, and I haven't talked to the current one, about trying to get that enforced someday. So I have a question, if it's pertinent for a one-word answer from the town administrator, whether that can be looked into for enforcement. It's on our books.
Yes or no, Mr. Klechner?
Yes.
Thank you.
On the motion on page 12-11, requires a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Moderator, I call for an electronic vote, please.
Are there 35 town meeting members who want an electronic vote on this issue? There are not, for the first time. Whoops. Oh, hell, let's have an electronic vote. This is main motion, Article 22. Too tired to count. Whenever you're ready. Article 22, main motion.
Mr. Moderator, Michael Burstein, Precinct 12. I miss it when we had roll call votes and married couples would vote opposite each other, and we all had a good laugh about that, but I'm not going to call for a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Burstein. You wouldn't have the opportunity in any case. And if you want to see how married couples vote, check the town website for the voting results the next day. Anytime you want to start. Okay, those in favor of the motion on page 22-11, please stand and press 1. Okay, those, you may be seated. Those opposed, stand and press 2. Who was at the call for this? Yeah, Mr. Davis, you want to withdraw your --
No.
Okay, all right, all right. The vote was 109 to 60. Yeah. Vote was 109 to 60, so the motion fails. And nine abstentions. I don't think it's going to hurt anything if we have a revote. The system seems to have become a little exhausted at the end. So let's have a revote. Okay.
Let's see for changes.
All right. All those in favor of the motion on 22-11, please stand and press 1. You may be seated. Those opposed, please stand and press 2. Abstainers, press 3. Okay, it's 109 in favor, 62 against, and 11 abstentions. Motion fails. Now ladies and gentlemen, it's past 10:30. Time for our motion to adjourn being entertained, and let me just mention that those of you who want to make a little, somewhat more of an inroad into the remaining articles, Articles 23 through 25, there are only two people signed up opposing the main motions under these articles, and there are none in Article 24. So you might consider not adjourning at this point and dealing with these three articles, which would give us a leg up and a substantially greater opportunity to complete our business in three nights. Mr. Margolis?
Mr. Moderator, my cat doesn't care about town meeting, and she's going to wake me up at 5:00 a.m., so I move that we adjourn the meeting until Monday.
Second.
Well, that would be the motion on the floor, so is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourning at this juncture till Monday at 7:00 p.m., please raise your hands. Those opposed, the motion fails. Article 23.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Frölling?
Could you possibly not include 25? I intended to sign up, but I expected to do that. I didn't know you were going to jump from 14 to 20. So I would like Article 25 exempted till Monday night, please. So I have a chance to sign up and to-
When we reach, Ms. Frölling, when we reach 25, I'll take the motion. Is Chet Riley here, by the way? Okay.
I'm going to be late. One day.
Okay, well, there's every likelihood that we will hear it tonight, Mr. Riley. Article 23. The motion under Article 23 is found on page 23-7, that the town amend the zoning bylaw as indicated in the accessory use table, moved by Mr. Selwyn, seconded by Mr. Franco. Mr. Selwyn.
Thank you. Lee Selwyn, town meeting member, Precinct 13, a member of the advisory committee and speaking for the advisory committee. This may sound repetitious because we had a similar article back in November. If you recall, the issue in Article 9 in November was whether we should be prohibiting the then previously allowed construction of an accessory housing unit on a single-family lot for the purpose of housing employees, domestic employees, and their families of the primary resident. In November, we voted to discontinue that use for all single-family lots other than those in S-40 zones. S-40 zone is a 40,000-square-foot lot. The problem with the, this particular use is that it applies a specific purpose to an accessory building, the purpose being to house domestic employees and their families. If that use is not fulfilled, then technically occupancy of the accessory housing unit would be unlawful. So for example, if an existing, if the existing owner sells the property and the subsequent owner does not have domestic employees, or does not have domestic employees living in that unit, then it would basically be vacant. The planning department, and during the deliberations on Article 9 last November, the planning department and others expressed some concerns as to why we were exempting 40,000-square-foot lots from this requirement, and basically this Article 23 corrects that. So what it would do is extend the ban on accessory dwelling units to all single-family lots in the town, including those very large ones that were previously exempted. The advisory committee heard some limited opposition to this from those who were concerned that eliminating the possibility of an accessory dwelling unit of this sort might inhibit seniors from having domestic employees who would be providing assistance to them living on the property. This issue, I don't even believe was raised last November, and yet it was probably far more likely that would have been a concern for smaller lots. In any event, it doesn't address the purpose of the amendment. The purpose of the amendment is to prevent essentially an additional housing unit being built in a single-family zone, which when the specified use is no longer applicable, might be, effectively provide a basis for an application to the ZBA for some sort of variance or special permit that would permit the use to continue for, that is, the use as a dwelling unit even though it no longer applies for domestic employees. So by a vote of 15 to 0 to 1, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on this to effectively close this loophole and prevent the unlawful use of these units or the de facto subdivision of a single-family zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll?
Hi, I'm Frank Carroll, Precinct 10. I'm speaking for the Brookline Community Aging Network. I appeared before you last fall when this issue came up and spoke to you about the fact that from the point of view of advocates for seniors, accessory dwelling units are looked at as a plus. They can be extremely useful resources for families in various kinds of ways of achieving mutual support. We have had this odd kind of loophole that one family here in Brookline took advantage of, and we had this, we acted on it last fall and set up a very narrow program that made it possible in single-family areas for this to go forward through, on a special permit basis, and now we're trying to close that off. Last fall, I argued with, I argued against what was being proposed there, thinking that it was too narrow, that we should be doing more to permit what in the rest of the world are called granny flats, because they can be so useful to multigenerational families in a variety of ways, and this is closing it off entirely. From, you know, from my point of view, we have a mechanism now through special permit to allow these. This is not something that we're going to see in large numbers. I think we should, what we have in place, we should leave it there, see what happens. We have much more complicated matters that we are handling through regulation, and I think with this, we, our regulatory framework is adequate for us to work with what we have in place. We should really be thinking about more ways of being supportive to families by allowing accessory dwelling units, and this kind of single, very narrow thing, we should leave in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyken.
Steve Hyken for the planning board. Well, the town meeting already properly, we think, prohibited these accessory dwelling units on all except 40,000-square-foot lots. There was a sense at the time that these larger lots could accommodate a second dwelling unit, but we've come to realize that it's still an egregious loophole, and so because the building of an accessory second unit for domestic help is a temporary use, when the need for that help passes, you have a building that no longer has a legitimate use, and we don't want to see that happen. You know, a single-family lot should remain a single-family lot no matter what size it is. So we strongly and unanimously support this warrant article.
Mr. Franco.
Ben Franco for the board of selectmen. I will be very brief, I promise. I just want to make a clarification that under this proposal, homeowners would still be allowed to convert historically or architecturally significant structures into dwelling units, so a carriage house or some other structure on the property. Board of selectmen supports favorable action by a vote of 4 to 1.
On the motion on page 23-7.
Mr. Moderator, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Anita Johnson, Precinct 8. What exactly is wrong with accessory dwelling units? These are houses that have room to put your parents when your parents can no longer live alone. They are houses which have room to put your children if your children cannot afford their own units. There was this, just this month, in New York Times, a wonderful article about how successful Portland, Oregon has been in promoting accessory dwelling units. The whole town is in favor of it. It provides low-income places for people to live. It does not destroy property values. It does not destroy the appearance of our beautiful neighborhoods. What is this fetish about accessory dwelling units when we need them so badly? Can someone answer that?
Mr. Selwyn.
Well, the issue is, do we have single-family zones or not? If we have a single-family zone, then that implies that we're going to have one dwelling unit on that property. And an accessory dwelling unit makes a single-family zone into basically a two-dwelling-unit property. The, what I think our concern is, that it creates a de facto subdivision of the property, which might even potentially lead to an actual subdivision. What's wrong with, what's wrong with the concept is that it undermines the concept of single-family zones. If we are going to maintain single-family zones, and you've heard arguments tonight and other articles that support the use and the continued use of single-family zone, even adoption of single-family zone to replace two-family zone to protect communities from overdevelopment, this is a loophole, and it needs to be closed.
Let me just say that the way Portland, Oregon deals with this is they put a size limit on accessory units. Their size limit is 825 square feet. It has been totally successful, and everyone agrees with it there.
Thank you. Ms. Moutner?
My name is Rebecca Moutner. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 11, and for my day job, I work in affordable housing in communities all across the Commonwealth. I appreciate Mr. Selwyn and the planning board's dedication or belief that single-family zones are an essential cornerstone of our community. I would argue, however, that if we could have more flexibility in that, we would make our community more accessible and inclusive to wide variety of situations. The current zoning bylaw has a lot of problems. It is very difficult to enforce, but I think the way to address it is to think collectively as a community about what we want, what kind of flexibility we want to provide to people at different stages of life, particularly elderly people and people raising children, and to address that problem in a more constructive, proactive manner. We have something that does not work well, let's figure out how to make it work well for our entire community rather than to close the door completely.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
Jane Gilman, Precinct 3. I, too, am troubled by this warrant article, and I would speak in favor of referring it or in some way reconsidering it for these reasons. Brookline has enjoyed a certain insulation from a lot of unwanted growth, despite what some of us feel about development in Brookline, and I think the times are changing, and we need to change with times. I don't like the idea- I don't like the idea of preventing families from clustering together. I think we should encourage more of that. And I agree, especially from an affordable housing perspective, that these kinds of structures should be considered favorably. So I would like to refer, or whatever the proper motion is, Mr. Moderator.
Well, what you do is you vote against it. Mr. Volk.
Robert Volk, Precinct Four. I'm all in favor of affordable housing, and I'm all in favor of families being close together, as long as it's not mine. But I think that, that's why I live in Boston. I think that people who are saying this is going to create affordable housing, keep families together, are living in a dream world. There's, in-law apartments are common throughout the town. A lot of people have them. That's where grandmas live, that's where moms live, that's where kids stay. This is not going to create affordable housing. It's going to create the kind of building we saw on Kent Street, which started this whole thing. And if anybody thinks this is going to solve a housing crisis or whatever, they're living in a dream world. This is not about affordable housing. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sharon Schoffman, Precinct 14. I have to agree with the previous speaker also. Part of the character of this town is that there are parts of the town that are zoned as single-family. And I believe that if somebody wants to be able to build extra dwellings on a single-family lot, they should instead petition to have the zoning changed, and that would be the mechanism to change this situation, not just find a way for the ultra-wealthy who live on forty thousand square foot plots to add extra housing to their single-family dwelling zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein.
Ken Goldstein, Board of Selectmen. I just want to remind people that we have a school enrollment crisis, and the last thing we need right now is more opportunities for housing, honestly.
Oh, Mr. Goldstein. Okay, on the, on the motion on page twenty-three dash seven, requiring a two-thirds vote, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, the chair is in doubt, we'll have an electronic vote. This is main motion, Article 23. I think it fails, but I'd like an electronic vote to confirm that, having learned my lesson earlier this evening. Yes. Those in favor of the motion on page twenty-three dash seven, please stand and press one. Thank you. Those opposed, please stand and press two. Motion fails. One hundred and five in favor, fifty-nine against, and five abstentions. Motion fails. One hundred six in favor, fifty-nine against, and five abstentions. Article 24. Motion under Article 24 is on page twenty-four dash four, including the map on page twenty-four dash five, that the town vote to accept the grant of an easement relating to the Carlton Street Footbridge, our old friend. Moved by Mr. Witt, seconded by Ms. Hummel. Mr. Witt.
Betsy DeWitt, speaking for the Board of Selectmen. This article asks town meeting to accept a grant, a grant of easement for land and air rights from the MBTA related to the construction of the Carlton Street Footbridge, including associated structural footings in order to provide ADA-accessible ramps, and is coordinated with the Muddy River Restoration Project. The purpose of the easement is twofold. First, the document will update addition, addition, sorry, existing permission to construct a footbridge over the tracks as a permanent means of egress to Riverway Park, originally granted to the town by the then-Boston and Albany Railroad in the form of a land release. Secondly, the current right-of-way plan delineates an area within the MBTA property supported by survey data, in which not only the footbridge can be finally located, but it also will include the accessibility ramp at the northerly approach. I said it all? No. Okay, so a vote to accept the grant of this easement will successfully clear the footbridge project of any right-of-way encumbrances with the MBTA, and in turn, will accelerate the project's ability to move efficiently through the mass DOT, Design Development Process, and strengthen the project for funding under the state's TIP, which is Transportation Improvement Program, which could cover up to ninety percent of the cost. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen recommends that we approve this in order to clear the way to get the Carlton Street project finally completed in coordination with the Muddy River Restoration, and we recommend unanimous favorable action on the vote on page twenty-four dash four.
Ms. Cavell.
I'm Kathleen Cavell from Precinct One. I have very little to say, except for old-time's sake, and because this project means a lot to many of us still. We're hoping you'll vote yes on this article, which the Advisory Committee and the Selectmen have both recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Now, I call Ms. Hummel to the front. This is the, an article in which there's no opposition. Ms. Hummel?
By a vote of seventeen to zero to one, the Advisory Committee voted favorable action on the language voted by the Selectmen.
On, is there a second to the motion for the question? Thank you. I have Mr. Hyken for the Planning Board, Mr. Davis, Ms. Gilman, and Dr. Vitolo. Those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the motion on page twenty-four dash four, requiring a two-thirds vote, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. I didn't think anything having to do with the Carlton Street Footbridge would ever pass unanimously. That brings us to Article 25, and after we deal with Article 25, I'll take a motion to adjourn until Monday. Motion is found on the gray supplement, page one, that the town accept the provisions of the retirement board members' compensation of general laws. Moved by Mr. Goldstein, seconded by Ms. Daly. And Ms. Wentz, would you come forward, please?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gadsby. Thank you, town meeting members, for putting up with this, and I'll try and be brief, and thank Board of Selectmen and the advisory. I will be brief, and, but I just want to take one second. I want to thank Brookline resident, Dr. Raymond, for, two years ago, she saved my life, my daughter's life, with an operation, and this Mother's Day, delivered my daughter's baby, a healthy baby girl. So, she's out there watching, I think, so I just want to say thank you to Dr. Raymond. Thank you. And on the, on the issue, I'll try not to go on too long, and this issue has come up every time, and most of the time, I have the, either the sword of Democles or the gavel of Gadsby over my head at eleven-thirty at night. Well, here we are again, and we're, so I'm going to be brief. What I would like to say is, many, many things, the employees, every employee union in the town asked us to request this, because the employees in the town contribute quite a bit of their own money to this, and they were looking for some way to incentivize some being qualified. I don't know if that's a statement on me or not, but they were looking to kind of incentivize people in the future to run for this position. Also, it became a lot more daunting, a lot more challenging. I mean, we have restrictions, reporting, and I don't think it's so much anymore, the bricks and mortar of the old committee days, or the, every day now, every day now is either the iPad, the computer, and talking to money managers all over the country, all over the world. For instance, and I'm just going to give you one brief, it took us a year and a half, me working on a committee, to save you between seven hundred and fifty thousand and a million dollars a year by changing the way we invested this year, but we had to go through all of the regulatory agencies, which forbid us to do what we were doing until we challenged them. We had to go through many, so, and then, we have the ability right now to invest your two-hundred-and-forty-five million dollars, and there's no questions asked. We are the deciding body, we make the decisions. The only thing I can't do is decide to give these guys three thousand dollars, but I could take your two-hundred-and-forty-five million dollars invested here, and here, and here. And we are very patient, very conscientious, and this body has always been very good to the retirees. It has been good to the employees, and I'll be forever grateful. Because every time I come by here, and every time I've ever asked you for anything, you've always been positive, whether it's money for retirees or disabled veterans, you've always been there, and you've always, but I'm kind, and I find it difficult to ask for this, and I, but between the regulations, between the classes, between the liability we have, and last year, you did us a favor and gave us twenty-five more million dollars from your OPEB, and asked us to invest that, and hopefully, that'll be two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars very quickly also. So, I'm just coming here, I've been on committees, I was on the PEC committee that helped save the town millions of dollars. I didn't ask for any money for that committee. I realize it's working together. I realize there's a natural synergy between us employees and you. I realize that I work and love the town of Brookline. So, but for this job, I think, and I'm asking you, and this will be the last time, I promise you, I'll ask you, I wish you would vote positive on this, because it's certainly a good article, and the people that worked very hard on it deserve it. So, thank you very much.
Just to be clear, what the subject of this proposed motion is to, essentially to set the compensation for the members of the retirement board at three thousand dollars per year. I failed to mention that, and I didn't quite pick that up in Mr. Riley's presentation. Ms. Wentz.
Karen Wentz, town meeting member of Precinct 11, and speaking for the Advisory Committee. As the moderator just said, this, this article would, well, I won't repeat what he just said.
What did I tell you about that, Karen?
The substance of this article came before town meeting in the May 2012 session, and as we did at that time, the Advisory Committee discussed that, we opposed it, as did town meeting, the principal focus was that the equity of paying stipends to the retirement board members, while the vast majority of members of Brookline's other numerous boards and commissions received no or little compensation, and then, the second, there being no demonstration that the retirement board's efforts are measurably greater or present more difficult personal commitments than those other boards and commissions. So the advisory concluded there is no compelling reason for change. So there were five who voted in favor, eleven opposed, and no abstentions, so we recommend no action on Article 25.
Thank you, Ms. Daly.
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, just hang in there.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nancy Daly for the Board of Selectmen. In the past, we have recommended against paying retirement board members any compensation, on the theory as the, what you just heard from Ms. Wentz. But we have reversed our position on this for several reasons. The retirement board members must participate in mandatory training programs run by the state. They are also required to disclose not only their own financial details, but the financial details of their family in order to serve on this board. Finally, they have a huge fiduciary responsibility to the town and the retirees for more than two-hundred million in pension funds, plus additional OPEB funds. And they spend many hours determining who to hire and how to manage these. The vast majority of cities and towns surrounding us do provide a stipend, including Boston, Newton, and Cambridge. Finance Director Steve Cirillo has recommended that we adopt this provision, because he notes that while he and the town controller are appointed by the town, and the employees appoint two people to the board, it's increasingly difficult to find someone to serve as the fifth impartial member, due to the many requirements that these board members must meet. He feels the stipend might help the town attract people interested in that position. The money to pay the stipends would come from the retirement funds. Therefore, by a three-to-two majority, the Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action on this warrant article for compensation in the amount of three thousand dollars for the retirement members.
Well, I have a question. How many members of the retirement board?
Five.
So we're talking about fifteen thousand dollars a year. Mr. Fine?
Yes, Jonathan Fine from Precinct 13. I just like, have a question, a clarification. Would the stipend be subject to credit for its pensions?
Yes, I think the answer is, but I believe Mr. Cirillo has indicated he would not take it, so I just, so your math is twelve thousand.
Okay, so it's twelve thousand dollars a year. And the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, Marty Rosenthal, Precinct Nine, and co-chair of PACS. I incorporate by reference everything Nancy said, and just want to emphasize that this is not coming out of town budget. And other than that, I just want to add that nobody has done more for the town of Brookline than Chet Riley, and I applaud him for his many years of service, and I hope town meeting will vote for this.
Ms. Frauley?
May I come up there? Since I didn't have a chance to create a speech, I want to speak.
Sure, come to the podium.
Regina Frauley, Precinct 16, and apologies, at this hour of the night, I'm exhausted. So I'll do the best. I was planning to write something that would have been something more coherent, perhaps, on Monday, but here we go.
I'm sure you'll be brisk.
I beg pardon?
I'm sure you'll be brisk. Go ahead. It's all right. Go ahead. Forget it. Please proceed.
At this hour, I will forget it. This is at least the fourth time in fourteen years that this has come up. I'd like to think it will never come up again, but I'm pretty doubtful about it. They've been waiting for the right town meeting, the right Board of Selectmen, maybe the right advisory committee to get us to agree to this. We have consistently and overwhelmingly opposed this, but in a reconsideration, on a three-to-two vote, the Selectmen have reconsidered and decided to support it. That said, we, there is nothing, in my opinion, as someone who probably spends more time at town hall than many of you combined, nobody works harder than this advisory committee. They had a fight to get pizza once in a while. Do you remember that, guys? It just isn't done. This is a volunteer, and if they don't want to do it, they shouldn't volunteer. They don't spend more time than most of the boards in this town, and I recently went, for the first time in fourteen years, this past winter, to one of their board meetings, because I had received something in the mail, saying that they were going to have a public hearing on whether they would ask for the three percent increase that they decide every year on the first thirteen thousand. I showed up- I showed up at 4:45, actually a little early, a few minutes earlier, very prompt, that's what it was advertised for, and within less than 10 minutes, they had concluded the public hearing. I was the only town meeting member there. So, I was asked why I was hanging out there any longer, and I said, "Well, I'm waiting to hear and see you guys in action and see what else you discuss." And I was so, "Oh, we've already had two hours of public meeting without a public hearing, and we've already conducted two hours." So, I said, "Oh." I didn't see it in the town calendar, and I was told, "We don't have to do that." We... Even the letter we sent out was nothing but a courtesy to town meeting for that 3 percent 10-minute meeting. I asked, "How is it that you could do that?" "Well, we are a state board. We don't answer to town meeting." So, I am going to oppose this, because I find that attitude offensive as a town meeting member who spends a great deal of her time volunteering, including at an hour of night, I'd rather be in bed. So, I'm going to oppose it, and I'm going to ask you to oppose it, and let's see if he doesn't come back in two years and do it again.
Ms. Goldberg?
Yes, Deborah Goldberg, Precinct 14. I'm very empathetic to all of us in this room who volunteer. There's no one who has a busier schedule than I do, and I think it's really important to be here and be a part of town meeting. This is what is great about Brookline. But I also think that in the last year, I've gotten a lot of exposure to the management and investment of pension funds, and the complications and difficulties and challenges that go towards those efforts. Brookline does a really good job, but who's to say that we'll be able to do that in the future on a purely volunteer basis? This requires increasing professionalism and increasing knowledge, and I agree with Mr. Cirillo when he states that he believes it will be a challenge to find those who are willing or able to put the time in without getting some compensation in this very expensive world and town to live in that we will require moving forward. I don't think when... If anyone is rude about meetings or has a cavalier attitude, that's something that I would necessarily support, but I'm asking us to step back and think about the responsibilities of the Retirement Board and the type of professionals that we hope to see coming in as we move forward. This is a huge fiduciary responsibility, and we are looking for folks who are going to help increase our principal, because as they're able to do that, the town's share will be... Have less requirements as we move forward. So, this is a job, and it's a job that other communities have put the stamp of approval on in terms of a stipend. So, I support the Selectmen in their choice this evening, and I hope that the rest of town meeting will also vote favorable action. Thank you.
Mr. Spiegel?
Stanley Spiegel from Precinct 2. I just want to second everything you just heard from Deb Goldberg and add that this is one of the few boards that actually has the final say over large quantities of money or fundamental decisions for the town. The Board of Selectmen does, they get a stipend. The Zoning Board of Appeals does, they get a stipend. The Retirement Board handles, as you heard, vast sums of money, and they have decision power. Yes, the Advisory Committee decides on reserve fund transfers. Yes, the Planning Board decides on sign review, but those obligations, and those are not paid stipends, but the level of not only sophistication and expertise, but importance to the town of having a functioning Retirement Board, functioning as it does, I think sets them apart. They're volunteers, but they deserve the sort of minimal compensation that this article proposes. I urge support. Thank you.
Thank you. On my right, sir?
John Dargit, Precinct 13. I, too, had the same challenge that Ms. Fraley remarked on, on that there was no posting of the meetings. But I did meet with Frank Zucker, Zucker, and discussed this at length with him and Chet Riley, and also the minutes of the meetings. He was very forthcoming, very helpful, and in fact, here I have... They have now posted the last meeting, which is on May 23rd, is now on the town calendar, and this has been corrected. As a consequence, I fully support this motion.
Okay, I do think we've exhausted this topic.
I do have a question.
You see Mr. Friedman and Merrilee at the microphones on the motion to terminate debate. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion... Oh, dear. The motion fails. Mr. Friedman?
Harry Friedman, Precinct 12. Just very briefly, I would note that this points out that the specific investment decisions are made by pension professionals, investment professionals, not by the board. I think that there are a number of boards in this town that work very, very hard. I can understand the fact that these people have to do mandatory training and have to disclose their finances, but if I didn't want to disclose my finances, $3,000 would not make me do it. I think this is a terrible idea, and I agree with the Advisory Committee. This should be voted down.
Thank you, Merrilee.
Merrilee for Precinct 6. Mr. Friedman might have just answered my question, which is, I've been in the financial services industry. I've had to get licensed as a professional, and to what are the qualifications of people serving on the board? Do they, in fact, make the final decisions, or do they get the advice and counsel of licensed financial planners and advisors?
Thank you. You know, I just want to tell that I was very disappointed in anybody that would possibly... I mean, I've made mistakes, and we've all made mistakes, but I hire people because they are very generous and very supportive of the town, and I'm sure if you've asked any person that's sitting there, or any person that's sitting there, about how Mr. Zika...
Well, Mr. Riley, would you please just answer the question?
Well, on the question of advice, we hire, we fire consultants, we hire and fire money-managers, we do the RFPs, we do the research, we do the... And as a matter of fact, this year, as I said, we got rid of... We fired our consultants, because between state regulations and other difficulties, our consultant was telling us our fees were going to go up, and some of the money managers were telling us that they were no longer able to work or will not be able to work in Massachusetts because of the difficulty. So, I've spent a year and a half doing RFPs, and we did...
Well, Mr. Riley, I'm sorry.
The question, Mr. Moderator, is do we do the hiring and firing?
No, the question is who makes... Question is who makes the investment decisions?
We do.
Sir?
We do with the... We do the investment decisions. We do the funds, we do the 75, 25, we do which ones is per... And now, we just hired a money manager. I've just... The answer to the question is, we hire the money managers, we have the final authority.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Ms. Pelkey?
Linda Olson Pelkey, Precinct 2. Am I missing something here? In the discussion under the Advisory Committee recommendation, it says that the board is made up of five members, three of whom are salaried employees of the town, and two unpaid volunteers, although one is a pensioner. So, why are we giving a stipend to salary to town employees?
Well, Mr. Cirillo, who is a member of the Retirement Board, has indicated that he would not... Would not accept the compensation if this passes.
Although that would be temporary.
Are there two other town employees on the Retirement Board? Yes? Yes, there are. In addition to their other duties.
Could we not limit this only to the unpaid volunteers?
No, I won't accept that amendment. I'm sorry. On the motion on page 1 of the Gray Supplement, number 1... It only takes a minute. Are there 35 town meeting members left who would like a... Okay. There are 35. This is main motion, Article 25. Whenever you're ready. Those who in favor of this motion, please stand and press 1. Thank you. You may be seated. Those opposed, please stand and press 2. And press 3 if you're abstaining. Motion fails by a vote of 47 in favor, 100 against, and 10 abstentions. I will accept the motion to adjourn town meeting until 7 o'clock next Monday. Is there a second? Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Town meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience.